Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our regular Board of Education meeting. This is Monday, November 16th, 2020. It's just a couple of minutes after 5:00 PM in the evening, and we're at Spring Mills High School in the auditorium. And I'd like to welcome everyone that's here today, senior staff, superintendent, all the folks out there that are joining us virtually. We appreciate you being part of the meeting tonight and helping us make this a very productive meeting. So, thank you so much for being here. I'd like to ask Dr. Murphy if he would leave us on the pledge, please, sir. Thank you, sir. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We need to make one change to the agenda. We need to delete item number 9.4, 9-4 from the action items, and that's the bid for the demographic and projected enrollment study. So, we're going to remove that one from the agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Certainly. Second back.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Beckwood to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number four on the agenda is the Local School Improvement Council, and we're doing the Mussumon Region tonight. We have a whole host of folks here from Mussumon High School and different schools in the south end of the county. And I would ask Deputy Superintendent Mr. Dillinger to introduce and get us started into the process tonight.
Thank you, Doc. We thank you, board members. This evening, we do have principals and members of their team, whether it be teachers, counselors, or parents, or business community members with us representing their local school improvement councils, and they are going to do their presentation. Actually, they were also a group that was going to do theirs last spring before we went to remote learning. They included some of the information that they had from their program then, their presentation at that point in time. And they've added some updated information. So, as you look through the data, as we explained with the Martinsburg region a couple of weeks ago, if they talk about star testing from last year, their star testing is really only a half year. It goes from the fall of 2019 to the winter of 2020. And we were going to see good results, but if we would have had a full year, those results would have even looked better. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Beth McCoy, who is the principal with Mill Creek, who will lead the Mussumon Region through their presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm going to share my screen with you and start our presentation. And Mr. Dillinger from Back Creek Valley, it will be our first speaker this evening.
As Mrs. McCoy said, thanks for inviting us to the board meeting. We are excited to share a lot of information with you, and we could go on each of us for several hours, but we'll be as brief as possible and just give you some highlights. The primary schools, you'll see that the data is very similar. We tried to keep it consistent to help us communicate with each other as well as for ease for you guys to see. We are using the STAR data from last year for both reading and math. It is the formative assessment that we have that is the best indicator for the general summative assessment that is given beginning in third grade. Our graphs at the primary level, you'll see a fall and a winter is illustrated here. We are looking for an increase in the dark green. In this example, the fall benchmark was 30% mastery. By the winter benchmark, it was 70%. So, we were looking at 40% more of our students had received mastery. So, that's exactly what we're looking for, which will predict then the GSA and help to get the results on it. We also, as we started looking at this, found five characteristics that were common to our schools. Instead of us each talking about all five of them, we thought we would share highlights from our school. They include parent involvement, technology, professional development, safe and supportive schools, and attendance. So, looking just in Back Creek then, our mission is to provide an educational excellence for all, and we truly believe that all kids can learn and that we are accountable for their learning. Even though it's a whole new experience this year, and that's something I should have said in the beginning, we are going to share some of those things that are COVID-related and that have changed a little bit in our process. So, the first part is looking at our general information. In the bright red is the number of students that we have that are brick. The blue is click kids. Back Creek has a total population of 147 students. You can see how that's broken down, and it's a little over 70% of our kids are actually here in brick. The other 45 are either participating with one teacher who's doing a split K1, and the other teacher has the 19 click kids for second grade. When we start to look at attendance, I'd like to introduce Hannah Carl, who is our guidance counselor, and she'll share some of the information about attendance.
So sorry, I was muted. But by looking at the data on your screen, you can see that we improved our overall attendance rate and decreased our chronic absence rate by using the methods listed below. One thing I'd like to briefly highlight is the monthly lunch and movie with the counselor. This method is a school-wide initiative that we've been implementing that uses a bulletin board to track the number of days that each individual class has perfect attendance. The bulletin board is updated weekly so that students are able to follow along with their progress and track how their class is doing. So, at the end of each month, the class that had perfect attendance the most days gets to eat lunch with me while watching the movie of their choice, and we've seen good success with this.
As we move on then to our academic progress with English Language Arts, on the left is the first grade STAR scores. We had 55% to 70% of our students beat success. In second grade, it went from 40 to 60%. Obviously, by the winter benchmark, we were still looking at working with 40% before we went out remote. That data was used then to develop this year's strategic plan. We've taken the one-year growth that's on the county plan and moved it down to where at Back Creek, we split that into very specific categories. In pre-K, they are responsible to learn the letters, names, and also the conventions of print, reading from left to right, that type of thing. In first grade, they focus on their letters and the sounds they make and to start forming words. First grade focuses on basic sight word fluency, and second grade really works on oral reading fluency to lead into comprehension by the time they move into third grade. In mathematics, next slide. Thank you. We made remarkable progress from fall to winter in first grade. We had 16% more of our kids that we needed to get on track. In second grade, we made some good progress and still had some to go. As you can see, the dark green is not quite as high as first grade. Once again, we're looking for a year's growth and have broken it down so the pre-K gets numbers since with numbers to 20. That's expanded in kindergarten to 100. First grade actually teaches the basic fact rules so that they understand what plus one, plus two means, and does the actual fluency with the facts to 10. Where second grade, they're working on memorizing all 184 basic addition and subtraction facts so that they're ready for second grade. I'm sorry, for third grade. The highlight that we wanted to share is our parent involvement. Obviously, you can see this is a picture from last year because there's no mask and kids are not six feet apart for sure. Those three little guys are now second graders, and last year enjoyed reading The Chocolate Touch. We looked at a different way of making sure that we weren't wasting money and added activities for each night. So, when they read a chapter or a set of pages, they then had an activity to do, which is the sheet on the left. We, this year, we chose a spy in the White House to go along with the election theme. Don't have pictures of it yet because it was delayed by a week because of remote learning, but the students are in the middle. They read chapter three last night, and tonight we're working on chapter four. Mrs. Butler, who's been online with us but can't get unmuted, is going to step into my spot and finish out the parent involvement with the next slide.
In parent involvement, each month, our school hosts a parent involvement activity directly after the PTA meeting. And when first grade had teamed up with Apple Patsy for a techno Valentine evening, little did we know that this event would serve and prepare for our virtual learning that happened in March with our students here at school. During the techno, the techno night, students worked with their families to find the word love using the Clips app, and they got to share pictures and talk to each other by recording themselves for a little keepsake to take home with them. And they also took digital pictures of a story sequencing activity, which also helped with our virtual learning. We hope to continue these activities sooner, more so than later. But as for now, we will just deal with what we have been, what has been put on our plate. I'd like to introduce Barb Ferguson from Jaredstown Elementary now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler, and thank you for having us. Good evening to everyone. And we are so proud of our little school, Jaredstown Elementary. We want to start with sharing our mission, and that is to provide educational opportunities to enable all students to reach their highest potential. We want to meet them where they are, and we want to help them get where they need to be, and not just in primary, but beyond that into, you know, later years of school and later years of life. So, that is our goal and mission. And we also have set up our general information for you, similarly to Back Creek Valley. And we have a student population this year of 233 students, 163 are brick and 67 click. We have one class of pre-K and three each of kindergarten and first grade, and two of which are brick and one of which are click in both of those grades. In second grade, we have four total classes, three are brick and one is click. And we have four students participating in West Virginia Virtual School and 37 staff members. And our attendance, we set some goals as well. Of course, we want students in school participating with us just as much as possible. We were doing quite well. You can see that we had really made some strides in getting our chronically absent students in particular coming to school. Ms. Angel is a social worker that we share with Mountain Ridge, and she's going to go in-depth with attendance as far as what Jaredstown and Mountain Ridge do. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight specifically for Jaredstown is that we had a lot of staff members, teachers, support staff, really help with an initiative to reach out to parents when our students weren't in school. As we know, at our level, a lot of times, the attendance is due to a situation with parents, and we just wanted to encourage in a positive way the attendance of students, and we wanted the parents involved with how important that was. And we certainly do. We started that last year. We've continued it this year, and we've had a lot of success with that, and we want to continue with that. As you can see, our graph is very similar with our English Language Arts, and we're looking at the STAR Formative Assessment data from last year, the 2019 to the 2020 school year. And our first grade, when we started in the fall, we had 38% of our students at mastery or better. And in the winter benchmark, we had increased back to 53%. And our second grade, likewise, we saw some growth. We were at 39%, and we were able to increase that to 50%, which allowed us to really see some strides. And if we'd been able to take that spring benchmark, I'm quite sure we would have seen even more mastery. And we then used this data to set up our goal for this academic year, and that is that all students will be at or above grade level or achieve more than one year's growth as measured by the STAR reading assessment. And below, you can see some of the things that we use to help that along. And as Back Creek Valley spotlighted, we also do parent involvement and information night. We also had a campus read, which was very successful. Anything that we can think of to keep students engaged and keep them learning in a positive and fun way, as well as intentional. You know, we want to focus on literacy, and we do. And for our mathematics goal, you can see that our first grade, in the fall, we had 60% at or above mastery. By the winter, we had 93%. We had made significant strides there with our first grade mathematics. I would have loved to see in the spring. Also, with our second grade STAR, made significant strides towards our goal of students being at or above grade level on that formative assessment of STAR. We had, thanks. So, I wanted to share that we, we have a professional development as our factor that we were focused on. As Mr. Dillinger pointed out in his first, in the first presentation, we tried to pick one thing. So, since everything is very similar in the primaries and throughout the South Berkeley region, so I have with us tonight Jessica Keller, who's going to share some professional development strategies that we did.
Hi. As Barb said, I am here to share how Jaredstown uses professional development. And so, one of the great things is that the staff at Jaredstown identifies the area of need. So, the professional development that they're receiving is usually very much catered to what they are struggling with or have interest in or see that their students have an area of need for. Some of the professional development opportunities that they have taken advantage of, they've used Patsy Hets, who is our Apples professional, and she has helped them with a lot of technology integration. They also use the APL strategies. Sharon Collins has come out and assisted with math training. They use a lot of in-house training. So, there is staff members like Becky Keys and Tricia Edwards, as well as myself, that would put on training for the school. And then now, in my new role, I've been able to come out and support the school using Schoology and Teams to better reach their students, especially in this crazy time. Now, I have the opportunity to introduce you to Sherri Stewart, the guidance counselor, who's going to continue talking about professional development.
Hi. So, some of the other professional development that was done was self-care for teachers, which is really important. The teachers are, I always say, they're on the front lines, and we're there to support them, and they need to be healthy mentally and physically. Also, we're calming corners for students to learn self-regulation, which is a wonderful thing. And hopefully, at some point when COVID is done and we can get those corners really set up, they're great in the classroom, and I know the teachers are really looking forward to that. And I also just wanted to touch on the trauma-informed training that was done, the nurtured heart, and it really focuses on just the whole child and looking at what is going on with that child and not just looking at the child's behavior. And I've even seen how the teachers are using that as we've been remote, so, which is really awesome. And then Angel and I provide different social supports as well, especially working with attendance and behavioral supports.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keller and Ms. Stewart, for helping us present all the wonderful things that happen at Jaredstown and throughout the county. And we are now ready for Mr. Ott at Inwood Primary.
Good evening, everyone. Playing simple, our mission in what primary is always shining, always learning. We developed that as a team way back when, a few years back, and we add positivity to air. So, with that said, we'll go right into some general information, looking at some of the growth in our school recently. Last year, our enrollment with pre-K through second grade was 160 combined. This year, we have 162 students. But one thing I want to point out with this growth is we've added 17 students in kindergarten, first, second grade combined. So, our K through two population has increased by 17. Right now, we're currently sitting at 93 students for brick and 69 students for click at this time, and we've increased our staff by three, adding our couple click teachers and our multi-cat special ed classroom. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hannah Carl. She is also at Inwood Primary and shared with Back Creek, and she's going to talk about attendance for a few minutes.
Hello again. So, as you can see by the data, we made some progress in our chronic absence rate, but we're definitely not where we would like to be yet. So, with that said, we have implemented several steps listed below that you can see that we are trying in order to kind of improve our overall rate. One thing that we're doing that was starting to work well for us last year was the Let's Party Initiative, and that once again targets classroom perfect attendance. And that way, they earn rewards, and they get to pick things between like extra recess, iPad time, or a movie lunch. And like I said, we're continuing to look at different strategies that we can implement to improve our overall rate, but we're getting there. Thanks.
That was an educational-based movie lunch is what she was referring to. Going on to English Language Arts with our achievement, looking at first grade STAR for English Language Arts. In the fall, we were at 46% at or above. We increased to 53%. Our second grade for STAR reading was 54% at or above, and we ended in winter at 64%. Some of the things we incorporate that helps us with our English Language Arts achievement is one school, one book, some parent involvement things, reading interventionist, tutoring, book buddy program, things of that nature with our English Language Arts achievement. Mathematics, first grade STAR, our fall, 81% to 86%. So, Jaredstown, we will catch you one day. Second grade STAR math, we're looking at 45 in the fall, and winter, we hit the 61% at or above. Like I said, going back on what Barb said, we really would like to see those spring assessments to see where we really did fall. At this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Brittany Williams. She's going to talk to everyone about our Reach for the Stars program. Brittany, when you're ready.
Good evening. So, about two years ago, I was constantly venting to Mr. Ott about the typical behavior chart in the classroom that everyone is used to, where the children can clip up and clip down daily based on their behavior. And after, you know, talking to my coworkers and Ms. Carl, and we were just kind of at a place where we felt like it just wasn't effective. It wasn't working for us at Inwood. It wasn't working for our students. So, last summer, the summer of 2019, we met, our PBIS group met several times over the summer to develop something that we wanted to implement to help our students better. And we came up with our Reach for the Stars program. It's a character-based behavior chart. I don't want to call it a behavior chart, but it's a character-based chart, and we modified it to meet our school motto, which is Reach for the Stars. So, our REACH stands for respect, effort, accountability, cooperation, and honesty. So, we start off at the beginning of the year really teaching those character pillars to the students in our classroom with Ms. Carl. We read the book, The Golden Rule. Everyone, every classroom in the building has it, and we really focus hard on that. And what happens is the students can earn these bracelets that are pictured right to the left. They earn them for showing those character pillars during the day. They can earn them in the cafeteria and the classroom, on the playground, in the hallway, at specials, wherever they're at. Every nine weeks, we chart the, where they've been on the chart for the full nine weeks, and at the end of the nine weeks, they can earn brag tags for their character pillar. Now, we do still have, you know, some children that struggle with making good choices, and so, we have fix-it tickets for them, which go home for the parent to see, you know, the choices that they were making that day. We don't really find that taking their recess was effective, you know. So, with the fix-it ticket, you talk about the behavior right then. You brainstorm with the student ways to fix the behavior. And since the 2017, 2018 school year, Mr. Ott saw an 82% decrease in office referrals by using our, our new Reach for the Stars program. And we also have an anchor chart in the room, which is all the way to the right in the picture. So, when the students do show that character word, they get to move their clip there for the day. And we have social stories that are actually, the kids really enjoy them. Those teachers are the ones in the stories breaking the rules, and then it shows the students doing the, you know, following the rules correctly and model, modeling appropriate behavior. Every nine weeks, we do the recognition where they earn their brag tag, and we have a calendar tracker that goes in their folder so that their parents know if they were on that chart today. And some days, we have, it says, "Good to go." So, some days, they're just good to go. They didn't get on the chart, but they didn't get a fix-it ticket. They just had a good day. And then, we meet regularly to discuss the data and see how it's working in our rooms. Back to Mr. Ott.
All right. Thank you, Brittany. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brent Sherard and Valley View Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Ott and Inwood Primary. It's great to virtually see everyone this evening. Next slide, please. I'm going to go into our general information. We're at 353 students this school year. Fifteen in pre-K. We have four brick classes and two click classes in kindergarten, three brick classes and two click in first grade, and four brick and two click in our second grade. And we were lucky to be able to accommodate everyone that wanted to come back to school and make a change. We did, however, have to get a little creative and do a first and second grade split class, which is working very well so far. Keep going to touch on attendance. Our attendance is, has always been strong. Our percentage has been really good. However, like many schools, we're having trouble with the new 90-90 goal that the state wants us to reach, where 90% of our students attend 90% of the days. That's eluding us by a few points in many other schools. Our highlight that we chose was attendance, so I'll come back to that in a moment. English Language Arts, we made some progress, first and second grade there, 45 to 55% and 38 to 45. And I put the major initiatives that we're working on to get us to improve. Supplemental lessons and engaging read alouds. Our kindergarten got together at the beginning of last year. They felt there were some holes that needed to be filled. They worked very hard. They even met before the school year started, and they put in some supplemental activities and lessons, and we reached some benefits. I believe their kindergarten was as good at the mid-year point as it was the year before at the end. So, what we did, when that worked well, we now have our first and second grade data teams, teachers working together to fill in the gaps that they see at those grade levels also. So, I'm hoping we'll reap the benefit there also. For mathematics, we made from 65 to 80, and from 47 to 54, wasn't what we wanted in second grade, but it always varies. We use our math interventionist. We're doing flexible grouping and number talks with the students. And once again, the teachers in first and second grade are working in their data teams to fill any gaps that we see. Okay, with attendance, something that the Assistant Principal, Mr. Matrudo, started a couple of years ago that shot our attendance up immediately is a program called Zuzango, and it's in a conjunction with groups and check-ins. We do attendance groups and individual check-ins, which seem to have been very helpful. And our teachers bought into positive conversations with parents, making a phone call and not chastising not chastising for their student not being there, but saying, hey, I miss your student. Where are they? We, we need them back in class because we missed them. Zuzingo, every month is a different country. And every day that the student attends, they get an animal card from that country that talks about the animal and they collect those. If they reach the attendance goal for the month, there's a drawing for several small animals. And the students love those. I mean, they look forward to that and it really made a difference. And then at the end of each month, there's a grand prize drawing and it can be something like our kangaroo with Joey. And the kids just go absolutely crazy for these. And it was, it was a great idea and it was a huge benefit to the attendance of our school. Now I'd like to introduce Mrs. Valerie Hall. She's a parent for our school. She's been PTO president, but what's really outstanding about Mrs. Hall is, is her work ethic for the school and her family. It's not just her. There's been many nights where it's been Mrs. Hall, her husband, her children, and even her mom and dad. All here at the very same time, working for our students. It's wonderful. So she's going to chime in about her click experience and just a little bit about our PTO at Valley View.
Thank you, Mr. Sherard. My name is Valerie Hall. I currently have two students in the Berkeley County School System. One is a first grader at Valley View and the other is a third grader at Mill Creek Intermediate. I originally had chosen brick, which has been very successful. However, as we know, I have also been a click parent as well. And I want to give a huge shout out to all of you teachers who have adapted and met the needs of your students despite so many challenges for all of us. And it's, it's been a very positive experience. I am a working mother as well as is their father. My mother is also in the school system, so we don't always have a lot of people to fall back on. We've made it work fortunately. But teachers have been great to us and we've had a really great click experience. As far as the professionalism, communication, organization, all of that has been really great on my end. PTO has been a little bit more of a challenge. This is my third year as PTO president at Valley View and I am very involved. I love all of those students as if they were my own children. And it, um, it's, it's been a little difficult this year. I have high hopes in every year that I've continued to hold that position. I've wanted to do more and more for our school and been a little limited this year, but it's okay. We have found some hybrid options to benefit both brick and click. And we're hoping to continue to do that. We don't have a large PTO, but I do know from talking to other schools in the county, some of them are non-existent at the moment. So I'm fortunate for the volunteers that I do have. Staff at Valley View has been great to me as well. And we are able to still do Zoom meetings. We do those once a month, probably twice this month, since we were on click for a few weeks. And we have some, some events that we're hoping that pan out and we'll see how it goes. But I, I mean, I, I can't say enough for my experience with Valley View and Mr. Sherard and Mrs. Imetruto. And I mean, everyone there has been so great and I look forward to to doing more with Mill Creek Intermediate as well. Thank you, Mr. Sherard.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Also, I know I sang her praises and her family's praises, but she's also been known to set up shop in one of our empty classrooms and give out free haircuts for an entire day. So wonderful people. And I'm going to pass the baton to Mr. Emmerling at Bunker Hill. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Sherard. I appreciate it. My name is Nick Ammerling. I'm the principal of Bunker Hill. And just a little bit of an introduction about us. Our mission at Bunker Hill Elementary is to ensure educational excellence for all students by being accountable, demonstrating and teaching integrity and showing respect at all times. Ideas that we try to live by every day. A little bit about our population. We are about 411 students. We have seen growth this year and a lot of our growth is in the kindergarten grade level. Across our K through three grade levels, we have five kindergarten, well, we have four kindergarten brick and two kindergarten click. And in first, second and third grade, we have three brick and two click. And our brick to click ratio is about two to one or about 60 to 70%, somewhere in the middle there, brick to click. And we have 60 staff members. To start off a little bit to talk about our strategic plan goals. In the spring, we got together as a team collaboratively and then we worked with Mill Creek as our who we feed into and help do some planning to come up with our strategic plan goals and make sure they align with the county goals. Academics, all students will perform at or above grade level or make more than one year's growth in reading and math. And I've aligned my personal goals in that area for this year. We rely a lot as some of our, my colleagues have said in star reading and math and using that as a formative assessment and using the data to guide targeted and intensive intervention and progress monitoring groups. In our third grade interim assessments for third grade students are IMAs that help give us data to monitor progress towards proficiency on the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment. And always instructional walkthroughs to make sure we're adhering to non-negotiables, APL strategies. Our second goal, health and wellbeing, creating safe learning experiences or environments that promote academic achievement and nurture students intellectual, physical, mental and social emotional growth. I'm looking at our Wevis attendance, attendance clubs. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And my school counselor, Ms. Leyla was going to go a little more in depth about that as we move towards the end of our presentation. Behavior plans, functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. We collect data, identify targeted behaviors and try to work with students to help them reach behavior goals to help them be more productive in the classroom. And of course, student support and recognition. Operational excellence, efficient and effective operational systems will allow school systems to maintain their focus on student learning. Again, walkthroughs, our teachers have common planning, which they use for, to make common assessments, analyze data, you know, plan for instruction, you know, nine weeks in advance. And we of course have our data teams, you know, they focus on critical questions they want to answer and guide instruction as we move through the year. For attendance, again, we'll touch on that in a little bit. Much as we have seen in the other schools, our attendance prior to COVID was going up each month between the 18, 19 to 19, 20 school year. You can see those comparisons on our chart and our chronic absence rate. In most of our months, October, December, January, February, we were, had saw improvements in our chronic absence rate from 18, 19 to 19, 20. And it's apparent to, it's good to note as well that as we got into that flu season, we see those attendance, those chronic absence rates. Sometimes we see attendance go down, but a lot of times we bounce back and see improvements in the spring. So we'd like to see that data this spring. And a lot of things we do to help with our attendance, quarterly attendance award ceremonies. And we go nine weeks award assemblies where we recognize classes with the highest attendance averages, they receive trophies. We have our preventing absences and tardies groups that Ms. Leyla will talk about shortly. And we have a ceremony every year that recognizes and honors our students from our PAT group who have made strides in their attendance and improving and reducing the number of days that they miss as they stay in the preventing absence and tardies program from year to year. So we honor them. And in normal years, we bring in the public and we've had board members attend as well to see that ceremony. And it's something that Ms. Leyla puts a lot of work in, is very beneficial for students and families. And we have home visits and parent contact, which we've done a lot of those in the fall this year. English Language Arts, looking, this is this year's data from the head from the fall window and that is first, second and third grade kindergarten does not take the star early literacy assessment until the winter. So in our, for our first grade, we had 50% of, 58% of our students were at or above benchmark. That was an improvement from last year, taken into account changes and cut scores. And in second grade, we were 44% at or above benchmark. And in third grade, we were at 46%. So definitely, especially in the second and third grade scores, as we incorporate kindergarten into the winter assessment, we want to see continued improvement. Our goal of course is to see all students be at or above grade level or have at least a year's growth. You know, we monitor adherence to the literacy models, the walkthroughs. We like mystery readers typically on the announcements and students looking at those texts that they're sharing. Reading is a gift. I mean, it's a program that we did through Title One, Drop Everything and Read, Book Buddies and Secret Stories is something that is a program that students are very interested in that our teachers like sharing with students. And math, again, 60% first grade had excellent scores from the fall star assessment, 60% at or above benchmark. Our second grade, we're at 51% and our third grade, we're at 46. Again, especially in third grade, we'd like to see some growth as we move into that winter assessment and see how spring data looks as well. And again, with math and cheap achievement, we want students at or above grade level or to make at least a year's growth. And we were Title One last year, we had STEM nights. We brought a lot of OSMOs into our classrooms. Our focus is on technology in this presentation. So we'll talk about how we've increased student access to devices. We utilize MyMath and our second and third grade use Exact Path to use star to help chart a course to fill in skill deficiencies based on star assessment baseline data. Okay. Technology, that was our focus for the presentation. Last year, using Title One funds, Bunker Hill purchased 70 additional iPads in cases for student use. So we already had third grade that was one to one through the Berkeley County Schools Initiative. And kindergarten, first and second grade had received six iPads per classroom. So the 70 iPads that we supplemented basically brought us to at least a classroom set or one to one, depending on the grade level. And of course, as we said, all third grade students have access to iPads provided through a BCS initiative. Teacher mentoring, we didn't just put them devices in their hands. We had a lot of professional development prior to transitioning to remote learning last year where this Patsy Hets was coming in, Sharon Dove, providing training to teachers, you know, on their planning periods, they were, you know, there was time after school when she did training with them. That was general education specials and special education teachers and teachers were paid using Title One Professional Development Funds. Also, our second and third grade classrooms have Viewsonics provided by Title One, as does our conference room, which in a typical year is very useful for IEP meetings and data analysis meetings. It makes it easy for us to project and review data. And here's from last year, some of our images from students working with devices, you know, lot of research, character traits, illustrations. They made comic strips, which the students had a great time doing where they were appropriately using quotations. You know, when they put quotation marks with dialogue, comic strips were uploaded to seesaw and the students were taught how to narrate the strips. And researching storms to go along with the story of the week. So they learned a lot about storms as it focused in with the story for that week in their second grade classroom. All right. A little bit of info, I'm going to start with Ms. Jamie Leylo. She is our school counselor and she is going to talk to us a little bit about how our, approving our attendance with strategies that targeted students with chronic attendance issues.
Thank you, Mr. Emmerling. Again, he said, I have my attendance group and it's the PAT group. It's preventing absences and tardies. And these are students that were identified as being chronically absent last year, which is 10% missed more than 10% of the school year. So this year I do have 25 students in that group and they missed a total of 486 days between all of them. So I go around, normally in a normal year, I would meet with these students in the cafeteria once a week. This year though, I have a cart and I go around each classroom and I call them out individually into the hallway. We just talk briefly. Each student has their, a calendar sheet that I mark each of their days that they've missed. If they've been here every day that week, they get stickers on their chart. They get a little token, they get a prize out of my prize machine. If they've missed a day or two, we just discussed, you know, why they were out, if they brought a note and, and what we can do to improve that attendance for the next week. Their goal each nine weeks is to miss three or less days. If that happened, they get recognized in some way. We used to have a little meeting celebration in the cafeteria. This year is a little different. Obviously they get, they'll get like a little certificate or something. My click students, I do have 11 click students that I also do kind of meet with. With Seesaw, I had a class with them and Seesaw and I've uploaded this calendar with their absences onto that class and they're still able to go in and put their little stars on their days that they're, they're present. And I still communicate with their parents as well. Their goal for the whole year is 12 or less days. And we, like Mr. Emmerling had mentioned, we, I do a big medal ceremony at the end of the year. We do invite parents, board members, board office personnel. We have refreshments and it's a very nice thing. The parents enjoy it. The students get medals. They either get a gold, silver or bronze medal, depending on the number of days that they've missed. And I am sure to, you know, congratulate the parents as well, since that improvement is a lot on their students or on their, their participation in getting them to school. I did have one student a couple of years ago, she had missed about 30 days the day, the year before. She ended up with perfect attendance that year and she was just so excited to get that gold medal. So it is something that we really highlight and they look forward to doing. We've had a lot of success with it this year. Attendance has brought in some, you know, some difficulties and some issues that we're trying to work through, but we're doing the best we can and hope to have another successful year with our attendance group. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Jennifer Chambers. She is one of our LSIC parents and a PTA member, and she's going to talk about technology, how that integration has impacted and helped with her child's education this year. She's been a brick and click parent.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Chambers. My son is currently a second grader at Bunker Hill. And like you said, he was clicked for the first nine weeks and just went back brick last week, which he was very excited about. Um, technology, you know, has done wonders, I think, especially for the situation we're currently in right now. Um, it's definitely taught him to overcome obstacles and to adapt to different situations. And I think where they have been able to use so many devices in the classroom at school, he's been able to adapt much easier. And being able to navigate through Schoology, being able to navigate through Seesaw and understanding how to get his assignments completed. And he's been able to do a lot of that on his own with very minimal assistance from us. And I also feel, you know, he's been able to still keep a direct relationship with his teacher when not physically being in the classroom. So I think he's really succeeded very well using technology, just with how much they have integrated it in the classrooms already. For him, the biggest piece is he really missed the person to person relationships that he was having in school and working with other people, which is why we ended up going back on to brick. But it was great. So.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Chambers. Thank you again, members of the board and the senior staff. And I am going to turn things over to my neighbor up the street, Beth McCoy and Mill Creek Intermediate.
Thank you, Mr. Emmerly. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to share with you this evening, a few things that we are doing here at Mill Creek Intermediate. Our mission statement that we start every morning off with is cardinals who care fly high in the air. And you can see we have values that we expect and, and a model for our students every day and everything that we do from discipline to academics to socially emotional, we work to achieve and work and model these values. Some general information with Mill Creek, very similar to Back Creek and Inwood, which makes sense because those are two of our three feeder schools. Our population is holding steady at a little over 500. We actually have surprisingly during a pandemic have had a large influx of students coming and going with transient population this nine weeks, which has created some challenges with staffing and enrollment. We're sitting at about 60, 40 split between brick and click and a full staff of 64. This is our fall data through star with our formative assessment. I wanted to start it out with this year because if you look, we have every subject and every grade sitting at 50% or above at or above benchmark, which we thought was astounding, considering we're coming off of starting the fall with several months of closures. And it just shows that our students are continuing to work within, in the home environment through remote learning and the click. And we have our areas of focus being reading for third and fifth grade and math for fourth grade. For our strategic plan, our focus points, building off of the county strategic plan, academics for excellence for all. And we're going to talk a little bit about later academic excellence also for the click and the brick environment. That has been one challenge this year is modeling all of these same expectations with both environments. We have literacy and math coaching being provided to us by the county. Got it. Instruction and interventions through Exact Path. We had several teachers that participated over the summer in Orton Gillingham training provided by the county and federal programs, as well as Zern Math that was offered through the Office of Special Education. Writing instruction was an area of growth that was needed that we identified when we met within our vertical teams with our feeder pattern. And Mill Creek is using the My Right program to help with explicit writing instruction. And Mill Creek is using the MyRight program to help with explicit writing instruction. Another focal point is our health and wellbeing, being at one of our top priorities. Going back to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, meeting those social and emotional and physical health needs of our students. We have a lot of attendance programs. We use Class Doja for our PBIS program, as well as a main point of communication for parents. And our staff are participating in a conscious discipline book study with our Shepherd University Professional Development Cohort. For operational excellence, we also have professional data teams that are built into the school day, as well as we use those during our professional learning days and culturally inviting classrooms. At this time, I'm going to invite Desiree Klein, who is an LSIC member and a parent of a click student at Mill Creek. And she's going to talk to us a little bit this evening about our goal of maintaining the educational excellence through the click environment and what her experience has been as a parent as well.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McCoy. My name is Desiree Klein. My son Landon is a third grader who attends Mill Creek Intermediate in the click environment. I myself was born and raised in Berkeley County and I attended school in the Berkeley County School System from kindergarten through graduation at Martinsburg High School. So first, let me just jump right in and start off by saying how great of a job the teachers and the rest of the staff are doing for their click students at Mill Creek Intermediate. I know it's been said time and time again, but these are definitely unprecedented times and I cannot commemorate them enough on the amazing job they're doing for those kids and us parents. Clearly, there's no manual or guidebook for this and yet they have made this process as seamless as possible. And the support they provided their students and their parents is out of this world. For all Berkeley County Schools, teachers and staff, if you take nothing else from what I have to say, please at least keep in the front of your minds to continue to give yourself grace. And know several parents, including myself, are behind you a hundred percent. So I'm a branch manager for a community bank here in Berkeley County. I'm also a mother to two boys whom are eight and three years old. So planning and communicating are what make me successful in juggling my roles as a parent, a businesswoman, and now overseeing my son's education in a virtual environment. The communication provided by the staff at Mill Creek Intermediate is exactly what I expect from a school and my son's education team. Mrs. McCoy and Landon's teachers, Mrs. Rush and Mrs. Finelli do a fabulous job in utilizing Class Dojo in a timely manner for class and school announcements. His teachers are quick to respond to my messages and they do a great job of communicating expectations of their students and providing resources through Schoology. Examples of this include a folder that is kept for weekly assignment schedules that provides a list of what assignments are due each day. In addition, my son's teachers make themselves readily available to their students both first thing in the morning, as well as during their planning period, should their students need additional assistance or have any questions. So my son Landon is on the autism spectrum. Therefore, he is in the AU program and has an IEP. From his two years of pre-K leading up to March of last year, Landon needed speech, OT, and reteach from a student, a special education teacher. Only two weeks before the start of the pandemic, we had his annual IEP meeting and learned he would no longer need those services. Landon made an extraordinary amount of progress in the five years he had been in the AU program with Berkeley County Schools. So I'm sure you can imagine the anxiety and fear that we had when Landon started virtual learning last year. And again, when we made the tough decision to do virtual learning again this year, especially with him starting in a new school. However, because of the teamwork between myself, his father, his stepfather, the gracious support we have received from our family and the work and the marvelous work of his teachers and the staff of Mill Creek Intermediate, Landon has been absolutely thriving despite the many challenges and changes he has had to face. He is currently holding As and Bs in his classes and we are absolutely blown away by his resilience and how well he's doing in his studies. In addition, his case manager, Ms. Knoll, has done a great job making sure his IEP is followed. Although Landon has never set foot in the school to attend class, the staff has made us feel at home at Mill Creek Intermediate. I cannot thank them enough for all their hard work and dedication to their students. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you very much, Desiree. We appreciate your time this evening and your role as a parent in our school. Another thing that we have, improving our academic excellence at Mill Creek is we have several teachers who are part of our Lucy Calkins Reading Cohort with Sarah Lewis and Jessica Bowman. And I just wanted to take an opportunity this evening to share some data. This is data from last year and the year before, so two thousand eighteen, nineteen to two thousand nineteen, twenty. These are students that looking at their STAR data over a two-year period of teachers both, or students both in fourth and fifth grade and their academic growth based on having teachers who were part of the literacy coaching program. This program models for teachers. They come into their classroom. They help teachers become excellent teachers and building lifelong readers as their goal. So this is one area that we have worked with our literacy coaches. Mrs. Ransom and Diane Craig are two of our spotlight teachers that we have here at Mill Creek that are working with the Lucy Calkins cohort. And Mrs. Ransom said that literacy coaching has given her an effective model on how to successfully teach reading within her classroom. And she's very grateful for the help and support by Ms. Lewis and Mrs. Bowman. Attendance is an area of excellence here at Mill Creek. We have maintained one of the highest attendance rates in the intermediate schools for several years now. And we put a lot of focus and energy into attendance because if our students aren't present for learning, we can't teach them. I mean, that includes remote learning and click. The three weeks we were off for remote learning, having students consistently being present for lessons was a little bit of a struggle. So we incorporated a little bit of an incentive where students who were present and physically present for their live lessons and did all of their work for that week. They, we did a gift card drawing for three Amazon gift cards. And it really helped to motivate them to continue with their remote learning. We also work with targeted programs with attendance. Of course, our counselors offer weekly meetings with students who are chronically absent. And one of the most successful programs that we have seen are each classroom working towards a classroom incentive. The students vote on a goal they want to work towards at the end of the day, whether it be, or at the end of the, when they earn their goal of earning a letter for the words perfect attendance. Some of those incentives were a hot chocolate party, an extra recess, an extra snack, a healthy snack provided by the PTA or some other parents. But this is a great way for students to know that they're missed by their peers when they're not in school as well. At this time, I'm going to have Kelly Zirk talk to you about a professional development cohort that we have with Shepherd University. It is a working relationship with the Shepherd University School of Education. We've done this program for several years now where Shepherd students are part of our educational program working through their pedagogy placement and student teaching here at Mill Creek. It is a grow your own model. We actually have hired several teachers within our school that were part of this cohort. And one important part of this cohort is professional development for our staff and for the Shepherd students. So Kelly, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening. I wanted to kind of mention a little bit about the study that we are going to be doing. It is conscious discipline, building resilient classrooms. We've had different videos that we've watched. We've had different, I'm sorry, articles that we have read and discussed. And I, I really have enjoyed everything that we have learned so far and I'm, and I know that the Shepherd College students are, you know, really benefiting from this. The conscious discipline is when, is using the brain-based social emotional learning. And that is really important now since we've had such a different year. Kids are not knowing what to expect. The brick kids, they don't know if they're going to be coming back the next week. So they get, their frustrations are shown differently. With this conscious discipline, the teachers are learning different ways to handle behavior and are able to seek out that behavior before it happens and to help them, you know, find different ways to, to be able to handle their frustrations instead of them just acting out and the teacher acting out as well. So we're learning how to handle our behavior during this also. So it's a, so it's wonderful. And with the Shepherd College students, they're, they're kind of at a, at a benefit from, from this because you might have one or two students in your classroom, you know, that may have a behavior issue or they might have to learn how to handle their behavior. But now you have a whole lot more that you weren't expecting. So this is, this is a great time to learn and to use this. And I, I think, you know, we can all, we're all learning together. And this is a wonderful study to, at this particular time to, to learn and grow and, and then help the students because it's teaching them also.
Thank you, Kelly. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our sister school across the ridge, Mountain Ridge Intermediate.
Thank you, Mrs. McCoy. Good evening. Tonight, I am joined by Mrs. Deanna Kendrick, a fifth grade teacher at Mountain Ridge Intermediate, and Ms. Angel Routen, our school social worker that is shared between Mountain Ridge Intermediate and Jarrettstown Elementary. At Mountain Ridge Intermediate, we are Red Hawks. We believe that we are responsible educators developing high achievers with knowledge and success. Our staff and students believe that we fly high with accountability, integrity, and respect. Our student population has been consistent with previous years. We currently have five hundred and seventy-six students and over sixty staff. We have a mix of brick, click, and hybrid teachers supporting our three hundred fifty-four students and two hundred twenty-two click students. We were able to accommodate all of the requests that we had at the end of the first nine weeks. While reviewing our STAR data from reading and math from this fall, we recognize that we have some strengths to build on and some struggles to grow. Our fourth grade ELA is moving right along, showing success from our third grade literacy coaching last year. Our third grade math data shows the climb that our feeder schools at Back Creek, Jarrettstown, and Valley View showed from last year's nineteen, twenty school year. Our overall goal is to increase our reading and math achievements by at least one year's growth. Academically, Mountain Ridge Intermediate works with the county and school-based mentors, as well as our literacy buddies that we have created in our building. We work with the county literacy and math coaches to strengthen our teachers and our teaching through professional development and our practices. We are blessed to be a Title One school and offer additional family supports through federal programs. Our discipline program is modeled from PBIS and we feel that parent communication is the key. Schoology and parent phone calls help to keep us connected with our parents. Our discipline incidents on the playground were cut in half over the last two years. And our data is showing the same improvements so far this year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Deanna Kendrick.
Hi, I am a fifth grade teacher at Mountain Ridge Intermediate. I have been involved in the Berkeley County Literacy Cohort for several years and in our school-based cohort last year. These cohort experiences that have been brought to us through our Spotlight School Program has been instrumental in helping me to establish literacy experiences for my students that generate a true love of reading and promote critical thinking skills that are needed to develop lifelong learners. With the support of the Spotlight Schools Program, I have crafted a classroom that promotes large chunks of time for independent reading while providing specific strategic support for each of my students in the classroom. I recognize, I recognize my students as thoughtful, mature readers who can read and then write critically about their reading. The school-based cohort has also provided a localized level of support that has been instrumental in the development of my reading instruction. This support as a spotlight school has been especially important in this year as we modify our instruction to support a virtual platform for the reading classroom. The county literacy coaches, Jessica Michael and Sarah Lewis, have done a fantastic job of providing support and encouragement throughout all of these cohort experiences. The students and families at Mountain Ridge Intermediate have also benefited greatly through the programming and outreach that is made possible through our Title One status. With this additional support, we can provide individualized tutoring sessions to our students and strengthen our families with STEAM night activities and literacy experiences. I am grateful for the training I have received in our literacy cohorts and for the support of our Title One team. But more importantly, I am excited by the growth that I have seen in my students as a result of these experiences. Thank you for your time. I now would like to present Mrs. Angel Routen. She is a member of our Health and Wellness Team here at MRI.
We're at Mountain Ridge Intermediate and Jarrettstown Elementary School. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we've been providing support to our students, their families, and the staff at MRI. So first thing is we provide individual support, meeting with individual students to provide emotional support and to provide and teach healthy coping skills. Myself, being school social worker, my time with students is more long-term as opposed to our counselors, Ms. Berg and Ms. Reiser, who are more short-term. Ms. Berg is actually our brick counselor and Carson Reiser is our click counselor. And we do that both in-person and via Microsoft Teams meetings. And we base our student referrals off of student, teacher, and parent feedback. Small group supports, so we're planning for groups. We're trying to figure out a way to safely do that at this time. Last year, we actually had outside agencies come in to conduct groups. This year, we're going to do it in-house and I'm really excited about it because I really like groups. We will consider doing a class-by-class group style that occurs during their lunchtime, kind of a lunch bunch situation. And we actually send out a needs assessment to students and collected data for group topics that they let us know kind of what they were struggling with. Virtual support, I created some coping skills videos that I posted on YouTube and shared through Schoology. Created a virtual office as well as a virtual social emotional library and a virtual calming room. Also, meeting with students via Teams and being accessible and visible on Schoology. Project Aware, we're referring students to mental health services provided by Project Aware, which is through East Ridge Health Systems. Attendance, we are currently working with our county attendance worker, reaching out to parents and doing home visits. And that feeds into family outreach, working with Backpack Program, getting families' information about Thanksgiving resources, as well as winter holiday resources. Reaching out to parents struggling with navigating and using online platforms while remote and connecting them to resources in the community, as well as providing internet access information. And last but not least, we're really focusing on staff support at this time. A big focus on self-care and teacher empowerment. So far, we had a month of self-care bingo where the teachers checked off kind of a bingo-style sheet noting areas for self-care. And this Wednesday, we're going to do a Wellness Wednesday for our staff, providing them with snacks and drinks, kind of like a VIP service, as well as weekly staff shout-outs in order to make our staff at MRI feel valued, supported, and appreciated. We also provided our staff with emotion check-ins for their classrooms to promote mental health awareness within the classroom. So thank you so much for listening to me talk about our health and wellness and student support. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ian Hillman, principal at Musman Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Fry. Thank you, board. I'm excited to be here and talk about the success at Musman Middle School. Our mission at Musman is preparing students for success physically, academically, globally, emotionally, and socially. This picture here on the slide is a situation in which we had to adapt, many situations, but this one particularly, which we packed several food boxes to prepare for the buses to go out to our students. We had Tracy Heck from Child Nutrition, several of her team members, Patrick Ashton, teachers, custodians, service personnel, administrators, all chipped in and we were able to get the food boxes to, to our students. So we are proud of that. With me, I have Ms. Carrie Beth Faircloth, who's an LSIC member and eighth grade language and reading, reading and language arts teacher. And she's going to talk a little bit about English language arts achievement.
Good evening. I'm, I'm just going to talk quickly about our test scores. You'll notice that for the ELA scores, You'll notice that for the ELA scores across the board. They're pretty much the same, seventh, eighth, and sixth grade. There is a little bit of a discrepancy for the math scores. After a little bit of discussion with the teachers in our building and Mr. Hillman, we kind of talked about. The difference in the ELA and the math. Usually ELA is at the higher side for us in our building. Whereas now we see that math is kind of taking a jump. Skyward, which is, I mean, great news. But our ELA, we were kind of trying to figure out, okay, what is happening? After some discussion, we came to an agreement that it could possibly be due to at the end of last year. When we were all click. We feel that we kind of lost a little bit there with them. This is also the first time that our students have ever taken star tests at home if they are click students. So you know, that could, that could lead to a little bit of a change also. We're not quite sure how that will affect us because. This is the first time we've had to go through this. So we're kind of learning as we go. But we are doing a lot of things to help with our test scores. As far as how to test now and how to work with our kids that are click. We're doing everything the same behind this computer screen that we would be doing as if they were sitting in front of us in the classroom. We're reading together, we're using all of our strategies, we're doing all of our vocabulary practices, we're discussing. And even our students that don't like to turn their cameras on and their mics on. They're chatting with us through the chat in our team meeting. So we are seeing that and we're starting to get some feedback. So hopefully we will see these scores increased by the five percent goal that we've set. And we've all agreed that we think that this is very attainable for our school this year.
Okay, on the math achievements, as Ms. Faircloth said, our math scores were a little bit higher than our English scores, which is. Not typical, but we were excited that that the math scores were at this level. And we're doing some of those same things that she mentioned, we're using iXL and ExactPath. These scores will be the basis for our intervention groups and the intervention groups we've created to address skill gaps. So we're at forty-two. Nearly fifty percent in seventh grade and forty-four in sixth grade. Onto our attendance. So our yearly attendance rate is at ninety-five percent, which is pretty decent. And our chronic attendance right now is at thirteen percent for the year. So our strategic plan goal is to get that down to about ten point three percent, which would be a decrease five percent from last school year. So we're not quite to the ten percent yet, but we are lower than last year by about two percent. And as Mr. Emmerling said in his presentation, you can see some of those jumps. Some of those laps in attendance are during the flu season, so we're looking on those. We're working with. The counselors are making phone calls. We have weekly attendance goals, attendance trophy, gift cards, and all kinds of things such as those. Some of the subgroup attendance, if we look at some of the subgroup from last year, we had Pacific Islander was a category that was low in attendance. This year, we actually do not have any students in that subgroup. And then two other subgroups that we highlighted on here were our low SES students and our special education students. Which last year were at ninety-one point nine and ninety-two point five percent. So we have a targeted group of students and list in those and we wanted to make sure we improve their attendance. So we are doing that this year. Both of those groups, they're not quite as high as we want them to be, but they're definitely improved from last year at this point in the school year at ninety-four percent. This year, one of our lower subgroups, which is at a ninety-four percent, which is still a decent rate as the Asian population. So we're working with that. We do only have four students in that subgroup at this time, so we're working with some of the families through translators to get some of these attendance notes in. As far as our school discipline, last year, the total number of incidents for the nineteen twenty school year was six hundred and twelve. Which breaks down to about sixty-one incidents per month. This year, our total number of incidents is thirteen, so that breaks down to six point five per month. So that's a pretty. Hefty decrease in discipline and. So far, we have a total of one out-of-school suspension. For our social, emotional, and behavioral. The bar graph that you see in the middle there is just some data from our counseling office for last school year. As far as what the reasoning students were visiting the counselors. So some of those were peer issues, behavior concerns, academics. Were the top ones for last year. From September to October this year. Academics, attendance, and the other category are the top three. I also wanted to highlight our Equity and Inclusion Committee. Which has been working hard this year through announcements. We have morning trivia, music between class changes. And then kind of similar to College and Career Exploration Week, when the teachers post their colleges they attended outside their doors, they're posting their. The flags from the country of origin outside their rooms this year. And then one program that we started, some of the teachers and I talked about this and the counselors talked about a lunch program. So when we were remote and it's continued into. Back in the brick learning as I started visiting classrooms and the kids helped me come up with a name for the program. It's called Lunch on the Hill, Man. So I've been eating lunch with different classrooms. It was very interesting during the remote time. We learned about, we watched a girl make soup. A young lady makes soup. We watched a young man show us his array of tea that he had at his house and we helped him choose a tea flavor for the day. And we also talked about the proper timeframe to dunk a cookie in milk. So that was, that was pretty important there. That's all I have for today. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Branch at Mountain Ridge Middle.
Well, good evening. Dr. Queen and members of the board. Just want to take an opportunity to highlight some of the things that we're doing in Mountain Ridge Middle School that I think are helping our students. Make progress academically with attendance and behavior. So academics and attendance make up five of our seven goals in our strategic plan. So I just wanted to highlight a couple pieces of data. That you see there, our star math this year and our star reading. I've got the the grade equivalency for each of the grades. And actually pretty proud of how our students have started the school year, especially considering that we ended last school year. With a nine weeks on click instruction, not even click really at that point. But we've gotten off to a strong start academically with which our star represents. Our attendance last year, and we'll talk about some of the things that we were doing for attendance. But you can see that our chronic absences were at eighteen percent, but that was down. Almost two percent from March of twenty nineteen. And our daily attendance rate at ninety-three point five was up nearly a percentage point. From March of two thousand and nineteen. So we were making some very good progress. With attendance last year and we were starting strong, I believe, with our academics this year. And before we switch the slides, I just want to point out some of the pictures there that you see. That's from our Steam Lab. And on the far right, you'll see me playing a game on the computer. And that student who's sitting with me actually programmed that game. And then you'll see some students who are actually building a three D printer in those other pictures. And so our Steam Lab is one of the things I think that affects both our academics and our attendance. Because I'm a firm believer in getting students involved in things outside of their classroom. And Mr. McCoy will talk a little bit about that here in a minute when when he takes over. So some of the things that we have going on academically, we have our clubs and our tutoring. I spoke about how I believe it's. Important for students to be involved outside of the classroom. And this year is a little bit different. We're not allowed to have all of the in-person clubs that we've had in the past. So we're doing some clubs virtually, still to provide students with some opportunities to be involved in the school culture. And have some input and things that are going on here. We have student and staff with mentors that work with at-risk students, both in academics and attendance. ExactPath is a program that is used countywide and we'll be using that during our homeroom time. We have extended lunchtime now with our homerooms, so that's a great time to work. Work in some remediation and acceleration with ExactPath and that's. That's designed individually for each student based on their star scores. We have our Renaissance Rewards that reward students and staff for their achievements and academics, attendance, and behavior. We have two past volunteers this year that are working with at-risk students. And I mentioned our Steam, our Steam Club and our Steam Lab, which teachers are able to use during their class time. And there are a variety of activities that are steam-related that we're doing here at Mountain Ridge Middle. With attendance, we have our attendance incentive. Where we reward students with gift cards and many of the things that Mr. Hillman was talking about that they're doing at Mussumon Middle. We're doing some of the similar activities here and providing some similar incentives. Last year, we had an AmeriCorps volunteer and she worked specifically with our students and parents on attendance. We don't have her back this year, but she did a great job for us and I think is one of the reasons why we saw such a great increase in our attendance last year. And of course, we do our student and parent meetings. We have had several of those already this year as well as, you know, our students. Especially our click students were struggling a little bit with the attendance. With them, so we're working with the parents, trying to get those students logged into their classes. And then I didn't include discipline data, but last year in March when we. When we ended up there before going to remote instruction, our discipline was. On on pace to be lower again for the fifth year in a row. So one of the things that I think has played a large part. In our discipline data is our TAIL program, which stands for Time and Instruction Lost. And this was designed by our teachers and it incorporates both incentives and. And discipline as well for students. And our students always look forward to the reward days that go along with our tail program. And of course, we have Renaissance again, which has helped with our discipline as well. So those are some of the many activities that and programs that we have here at Mountain Ridge Middle, and I'm going to turn it over to our parent. That's with us here this evening, Phil McCoy. He is a parent of a current student here as well as a parent of a former. And current state volleyball champion at Mussumon High School. So, Mr. McCoy.
Hello, everyone. Dr. Branch asked me to come and speak to you guys about school culture with here at Mountain Ridge and I've got, I've kind of got a unique perspective because. I've had two children, one, as he said, is in the eighth grade now, so I've had two that has come through school here. But but they are very, very different kids. And so I've really got a unique perspective of what's available for each type of personality. You know, my oldest was a little bit, she's a little bit more withdrawn. You have to bring her, bring her out some. And the youngest, which is here now. Is more outgoing, but both of those have found multiple activities to do during school, whether it's groups from student council. Across country, FCA, just a ton of things for them to do. To the point where sometimes it ones inquire, one was in in band. But to the point, to some extent where they they almost didn't have time to do everything that they wanted to do. And I thought that was a really good problem to have. But when you look at from a parent's perspective of your your child in school, of course, academics is really important, but there's a social aspect as well. And that social aspect at Mountain Ridge, we could not be happier with how our kids grown, had had grown socially. With their social education here at Mountain Ridge, being included and something for everyone. And even to the extent for where we have at-home learning or distant learning where we're forced into those situations. There's things available to them then as well. So if they wanted to, if they missed their friends or they miss just. Being part of a social group. And of course, you have every morning, you have Dr. Branch's hilarious joke of the day, which our whole family enjoys, which we come back and. And watch at some point. So and I think I could speak for my wife as well, that we've been really pleased. With all the activities, the social programs that were available and the wide array that were available. To each of them to match their personalities and kind of take them out of their comfort zone. And to learn a little bit about something else. And both of them took advantage of that and they were encouraged to do so. Not only by Dr. Branch, but by the staff as well. So thank you guys for hearing us tonight and but we really do appreciate. All those programs and the activities that they had available to them.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And we do have one other member of our Mountain Ridge family with us here this evening. Pastor Glenn Murphy is a Talk to Me listener. He's also a past volunteer and he's working on becoming our interventionist. So at this time, I just want to turn this, turn it over to Pastor Murphy to talk about his experiences here at Mountain Ridge Middle.
Thanks, Dr. Branch. I've been involved with Mountain Ridge Middle School now for just a little bit over two years, I guess. And there are a few things I want to say as a pastor for a church here in the area. First off, we met. At Mountain Ridge Middle School for a year and a half and it gave me a great chance to just get some insight. Into the school and the school's relationship with the community, which to me is very, very important. In addition to letting us meet in their school, I couldn't help but notice on several Sundays. That there would be basketballies coming in, the kids would be coming into play and that the parents would be there and. And meeting with the kids and so on. And I was very, very impressed by what I saw there. And also being a church that met there at the school. We partnered with Mountain Ridge Middle School last year at Christmas time and then this year at Christmas time. Not only with Mountain Ridge Middle, but also with a couple of other schools, the intermediate school and Jarrettstown Elementary. And we wound up getting another church involved with us too, and an Angel Tree Ministry Program. At Mountain Ridge Middle School and then also with the other two schools too, but at Mountain Ridge Middle School this year and last year. The guidance counselor there, they worked with the teachers to identify some students who they thought. Their families might be interested in participating in a program like that. And in order to do that and do it as well as they did, I felt like they had a real, have a real good. Understanding of the students in their school and their backgrounds and their needs. And I was really impressed with the way they handled it. As we were involved with the school, I thought to myself that I needed to be involved on a different level too. So I got involved in their. Talk to Me program during the eighteen nineteen school year and then the nineteen twenty school year as well. And there are a couple of things about the Talk to Me program that really stuck out to me. One is when I would talk to the kids during lunchtime. The number of activities that were available to them was very, very impressive to me. I was just amazed by what I saw. And a lot of times I would look for the kids who seemed to be sitting by themselves to talk with them. And I remember talking with one student, she was an eighth grader at the time. And she was having difficulty in math and she told me that she was failing the class and she felt very bad about it. And I asked her what she was doing about it and she said, well, I'm failing. And she seemed to be kind of resigned to failing. And I said to her that it was probably a good idea to go and talk to her teacher. So she was kind of resistant to that because I think I can understand that natural tendency. If you're not doing well in a class, it could have been kind of intimidating. But I promised her that if she spoke to the teacher, she would probably get some kind of good feedback from the teacher just by showing the initiative that she did. I went back to her the following week and I asked her, she talked to the teacher. And she was thrilled. She said, just for going to talk to the teacher about what she needed to improve her grade, the teacher had rewarded her with an extra points. And she actually pulled a grade up during the year from an F, a failing grade, F to a C. And I was very, very impressed because she could have been very intimidated by the teacher, but the teacher was actually very open to her coming to him. And talk to him about what it was that were her needs and how to address that. And then also through the past program, I was involved with tutoring some kids just before we went out last spring. And there were a couple of kids, as we talked a few times, I felt like I needed a better understanding of where they were as far as. Their relationship with studies that they had going on. So I would say to them, let's go and talk with your teacher for just a minute. And what impressed me was when the student, I would go and talk to the teacher. The teacher knew very specifically, not just where this child was as far as academics went, but. Even to the point where the teacher knew in the top of his or her head what the grade was on the last quiz or exam that the student had. And to have that level of understanding and knowledge just showed me the level of care and concern that the teachers there had. I'm very, very impressed with the way the school is partnering in the community here. They just did the. Covid testing there about a month or so ago. And I, to me, as a person who lives in the community, it's just huge for a school to be a vital part of the community. And that's what Mountain Ridge Middle School is here in this area. And I wanted to share that. And I think a lot of it is attributable to. Leadership style that Dr. Branch has put in place and the teachers and the faculty, there's going to be following right into that pattern, that path. So. I want to say thank you for having a school and a school faculty like that available to this community here in South Berkeley. Thanks.
Thank you, Pastor Murphy. And that wraps up the presentation for Mountain Ridge Middle School. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Holly Clapner, principal at Mussumon High School.
Thank you, Dr. Branch, and thank you to my colleagues that have done. Thank you, Dr. Branch, and thank you to my colleagues that have done such an awesome job. It makes my job much, much easier when all the students come from, to Musselman from the South Berkeley community. I just wanted to start off with some general info. The enrollment as of this morning, sixteen eighty. We have nine hundred and fifty-one BRIC students, seven hundred and twenty-nine CLECK students. And then there's the breakdown between nine, 10, 11, and 12. As you can see, we have a huge nine, ninth, and 10th grade class. So we'll be well over seventeen hundred creeping up on eighteen hundred in the next couple of years at Musselman. I wanted to talk to you about our SAT prep. As you know, the SAT is now our accountability test for our junior class. Now that this will be the fourth year we'll be giving the SAT, we did not get to give it in the spring, so we actually just tested those students this past month, which I'll show you that data in just a minute. But with the SAT prep, in the ninth grade, when students come in, they're going to receive their college board account. They will also take the PSAT, which our ninth graders did get to take before we went to remote learning a couple of weeks ago. And then they also practice Khan Academy at least once a week in their classes. 10th grade, they're going to take the PSAT January twenty-second with our juniors. Their test got bumped because we were orange and remote. They're also doing the Khan Academy and our teachers in 10th grade will start coaching those students, being academic coaches with the PSAT information. Our juniors, like I said, will take the PSAT in the fall and then in April, they will take the SAT, which again is our accountability standards. I just got this data this morning, so I got to sneak this slide in. But our SAT data from the students that were supposed to take it in April, we actually got to give it to them about a month ago. And then we also had a makeup day of about twenty-five students that are not included in this. Their scores haven't been graded yet. But we had, as you can see, our school right now is above the district and the state in, in the various categories. So we're very excited about that. And that's about a hundred and fifty-seven students that were tested. And I just mentioned this earlier, the practice PSAT. The freshmen took in on October fourteenth. Those scores aren't posted yet. I did check this morning along with the SAT. And then again, they will, tenth and eleventh will take that January twenty-sixth. Post-secondary and career readiness. These are things that we like to focus on. These are our successes. Class of 2020 had sixty-eight Promise Scholars, Scholars, and there's probably actually a few more because some of the colleges actually let them take the SAT when they got to college this year because they missed out last year. We also tested about two hundred of the SAT. Like I said, we have about twenty-five tests that we haven't gotten back yet. CTE, we have fifty completers from last year and thirty-five at James Rumsey. And then with our dual credit students, we usually are between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred dual credit students taking classes at Blue Ridge, Shepherd, WVU, to name a few. Our attendance last year was, was getting better. October through December, we were very happy with that. It's, it's hard to get ninety-two or above at the high school level. So we were, we were doing some good things, which will be talked about in just a minute. January and February, obviously, we took a little bit of a hit with flu season and possibly a little pre-COVID that we didn't know about yet. And then March, we started to creep up a little bit before we ended up going out, going remote. At this time, I want to introduce Angela Horner. She is parent of a junior and she had a senior last year that graduated during COVID. She's going to talk about some of the attendance incentives that she was a part of.
Thank you for this opportunity to come to you this evening and discuss, as an LLSIC member and a representative of that group, what we were collaborated last fall and some incentives that we put in place to help reach our goal to improve the chronic attendance rate at Musselman High School. The first incentive that we focused on was those students that had perfect attendance for the nine-week quarter were placed in a drawing and those winners were given tickets to go to the front of the lunch line. We were told that that was something that the kids would like to achieve and find importance in. So we came up with that incentive as a different tool to help them, give them more time to get their lunch and then be able to socialize during their lunchtime. The second one, because it seemed like the senior group were a part of that chronic attendance issue. So to focus on them, we also, out of that nine-week, those that had perfect attendance during that, that time period were placed in the drawing and there was a male and female student giving priority parking at the front of the building. They had signs out front, so that was given, I think, at our spirit assembly. So they were also recognized in front of the school population as well. Lastly, we brought back the Rise and Shine Breakfast incentive, where on a Monday morning, there would be a surprise pop by through just any classroom, if there were, all students were there and were there on time, they were given a free breakfast. So we found that through those different incentives, we were seeing success in students holding one another accountable for their absences and looking forward to receiving what they were being given. So I thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate being able to share this with you. And I think now I'm turning it over to Chad Spencer that's going to talk about the CLECK attendance.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things that I wanted to point out about the way the year has gone so far in terms of teaching CLECK students. I have about a hundred and ninety students in seven classes. Five of those classes are CLECK classes, which make up about a hundred and seventy of those students. What you see on the slide there are the numerous ways that we're trying to keep the kids engaged, keeping lines of communication open, letting them know, you know, you know, one of our mottos is we want you here. You can see those signs all throughout the school. And even as CLECK students, we still want them here as, as far as participating in their classes and joining teams meetings. So, you know, as, as you know, at the high school level, teenagers kind of have their own special minds. So, so we've had to become creative. We've had a couple of forms that we've come up with so that teachers can track attendance in their classes. Very simple questions that students just log in, you know, click buttons. It makes it easier for us to, to track, okay, what are, who are the kids that are constantly showing up for their CLECK classes? Who are the kids that we need to keep in touch with? And then the staff works in conjunction with the administration to keep a call log where we constantly are calling students and their parents different times of the day, just so we can make sure that we're reaching out. Teams meetings themselves. If anybody knows a, a specific magic solution where every kid will join a teams meeting, I'd appreciate that. You know, there are days, I have one class that has approximately fifty students in it. I'll get maybe ten students that will show up for a teams meeting. So I'm constantly reaching out to the other thirty or forty kids, you know, saying, hey, you know, I'd like to see you. I'd like to be able to have discussions with you on the literature that we're going through or things of that nature. We ask the students login at eight-thirty in the morning just to let us know, hey, we're, we're here, we're paying attention. And of course, you know, teachers ask that students participate in teams meetings as much as possible, particularly on Mondays, where we kind of give a breakdown of this is what's going on for the week. So the kids get a, the big picture of Monday through Friday. And then ask them to join the teams meetings as often as possible after that, so that, you know, we can discuss whether it's math problems, English, science, you name it. Yeah, I can tell you as far as communication with parents in my Schoology box, currently there's over a thousand messages just for the first nine weeks. And, and in a typical year, I usually don't have anywhere near, near that number in the whole year just because, you know, of course, everybody's in school. So Schoology really has been an important tool in helping us become effective, effective in communicating with our kids. So I guess the, the, the big picture here is, is, you know, getting high school kids to actually join in our teams meetings. And I think that, that will help a lot with reducing chronic absenteeism. Our brickheads are doing really well. So so we're constantly meeting to see if we can come up with different approaches to help our, our CLECK kids.
Thank you, Chad. And at this point, we want to say thank you from South Berkeley Schools and want to know if anyone has any questions for any of our panelists.
I'd like to ask the last speaker, Mr. Spencer, English teacher. You're classified then as a hybrid teacher.
Well, I have, my brick classes are solely brick classes, so there are no CLECK students during that, those same periods. So I have two classes that are just brick and then I have five classes that are just CLECK.
All right. Well, my next question is to anyone. We have a geothermal schools in the South Indian County. I'm sitting here trying to remember.
Mill Creek is.
Okay. How's the air quality? I remember that was one of the selling points. Has that improved?
Absolutely. We have not had, the geothermal was added the year that I came to Mill Creek. And we have had very minimal disruptions to heating and air and very good air quality.
Okay, Coach. They're telling us as we go into the winter, we're supposed to keep windows open. I don't even know if you can open your windows or not. But I was just wondering. This question's about special ed. When we're in red or orange, am I right that the special ed students, some of them are still going to school in those days at the schools? Anyone?
That's correct. We have them in the building on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays.
Okay. And and a parent told me that there's a list of who gets to go and who does not go.
There are criteria, Mr. Murphy, for those students to come, come to school. There are more fragile populations is who we bring back to school.
I, I didn't understand that last statement.
There are more fragile population.
So I, I had a parent asking me about an autistic child and I said, well, who's not going? And I said, well, there must be an appeal process or something. They would definitely be in the more fragile category. How is this, is there a list that turns?
Let me provide a little bit of information and then Mr. Dilly can jump in. So let's back up first. When we talk about all students who are receiving special education services, those are based on their individual IEP or individual education plan. So what Mr. Dilly is speaking to is based on those children's IEP. Then those students are being served in our school during this transition period or during this period of pandemic. So what I might add, you and I talked afterwards, we can find out the specifics. But if families have questions, they need to consult with their principal and then also look at that individual education plan. And that's really the guiding document for how the services are delivered. And then if it's deemed so in the documents, if they need to come to school. And that's really a requirement of those IEP. So Mr. Dilly, I don't know if you want to add anything to?
You covered it quite well, Dr. Murphy. That's a very accurate statement.
Just one question, Dr. Murphy. Did they have to go through the IEP process from start when we went to the COVID issue?
I'm not familiar with those details. I know we did have IEP reviews. So Mr. Dilly, can you jump in there? Did you hear the question?
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
My question was, when the COVID situation began last year, did we have to go through the IEP process all over again?
What we did was we set up what we consider remote learning plans and those plans help dictate what the students are receiving at this point in time.
And finally, to the LSIC members, in the law, you have a lot of power. And you can, and I'm thinking more towards the middle and high schools, but I don't want the elementary people to disturb this either. In there, you have the ability to create off-site classrooms. There's a process involved. But it would be for students, your imagination's the limitation of what, what could be done. But when you get into your LSIC meetings, look at the law and look at that off-site classroom process. It might capture the motivation of some students that you're struggling with in discipline or something like that and also be an incentive for attendance in other areas. LSIC in the law. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question please. Todd Beckwith. And hello, Mrs. Ferguson. One question for you. You, you on your grade breakdown happened to show four West Virginia Virtual students. I suppose there are others in other schools, but since you showed that, I'll ask you the question. Are those students, do they take the same assessments as your other students in the school and consequently are included in your results for the, for the grade levels?
So our West Virginia Virtual students are, they have a curriculum that is, follows West Virginia curriculum. But as far as the STAR formative assessment, I do not believe they are included in that.
Mr. Beckwith, they would not be taking the STAR. They would, they still follow the classes they take. They're still following the generals, they're still following the content standards of, of West Virginia. At our primary schools, which Barb is, they don't do the general summary of assessment. But yes, if they were a third grade through eighth grade student, they would be taking, or eleventh grade student, they would be taking general something for the SAT.
So just curious as a follow-up, how often do you, do you keep in touch with those students to know what kind of progress they're making? That they're going to, should be doing and such?
Yes, we do. We are in close contact with those parents and, and students. We get a weekly report from Holly Branch, who is the coordinator for West Virginia Virtual School. And I, as the point of contact for the school, I reach out to those parents and see what supports they may need and how, you know, if there's anything that we can do to assist because they are still, in my case, Jaredstown students. So I want to make them feel part of the school and have them participate in anything that they would care to participate as far as like pictures or if we have a parent involvement at night virtually, we just want to include them. And so, yes, they do get regular progress reports.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, I'd like to thank all the principals, teachers, parents and all the community members that have been here tonight to make this such a wonderful presentation. We appreciate the information and you taking time out of your regular day. I know all of you are very busy. And, and making such a nice presentation. Like, thank you so much for the information. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I have one suggestion possibly for the high school and the click. I went to University of Illinois. So a lot of our classes had like 700 people in them. The one thing that they would do for attendance was on sporadic days. They would send a sheet around. You'd sign up and you'd get like five points extra credit. I don't know if that would be something that maybe would work with the high school students. That could be just a sporadic thing every so often. They're not going to know when it's going to happen. But it might motivate them to join the meetings if they think they could get a little bit of credit for it.
All right. Well, thank you for passing that along. And it'll be something that I think we've got several principal meetings coming up. Later this week and we'll approach that topic. So I appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you. Let's take about a 10 minute break. Hey, everyone. Thanks for the break. I'm glad everyone's back. We're going to continue with our recognitions. And the first one is Dr. Walker is going to introduce a student on Native American, American Indian Heritage Month. Dr. Walker, are you there?
I am here. Good evening. Yes, the month of November is American Indian Heritage Month. And what we have asked is that we've asked students to share certain aspects about their culture regarding. American heritage, heritage, American Indian Heritage Month, which is also known as First Nations. Unfortunately, the student was unable to make it today. So we will defer to another time for that student to be able to share their information.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Item number two on the agenda under recognitions is the Berkeley County Schools Distinguished Service Employee of the Year. And Tracy Heck is going to come forward and present that recipient. Tracy?
Good evening. It's with great pleasure that I am here tonight to speak about the fabulous Mrs. Sandy Nadenbusch, the Martin Spurk, Martin Spurk South Middle School Cafeteria Manager. Over the last nine years, I've had the great pleasure of getting to know Mrs. Nadenbusch as both an outstanding manager and an outstanding and awesome mother. Without a doubt, Sandy Nadenbusch is a true nutrition, school nutrition hero. And one of the leading school nutrition managers in Berkeley County Schools today. Any district would be lucky to have her unique combination of professional dedication, business savvy and programmatic creativity. As a 13 plus year nutrition veteran in Berkeley County Schools. She oversees school meals and other nutrition programs in three buildings to include. South Middle, Hikeside Learning Center and the Berkeley Heights Head Starts Center. For an enrollment of near 900 kids. And she does this with exceptional enthusiasm and a can do spirit. Tonight, I want to speak to you about just three of many reasons as to why Mrs. Maidenbusch is here to include. Commitment, leadership, advocacy and collaboration. First, commitment to children. In Mrs. Nadenbusch's world, it is all about feeding hungry kids. During our COVID-19 feeding mission, Mrs. Nadenbusch organized and led teams of 15 plus people during the spring. When COVID-19 pandemic started, Mrs. Nadenbusch actively and openly committed to being the county's single feeding site. Her incredible commitment and leadership helped us serve over 157,000 meals from March to May. I've told her many of the time that she was my saving grace in more ways than one. Not only did she commit to feeding our community, she made it a family affair. Each day when our small band of merry women would check inventory or pack bags, her adult daughters would be there as well to help complete our mission. Her commitment to children in our community, during this time can be seen through her family as well. Second, leadership and advocacy in career. Mrs. Nadenbusch has an intrinsic motivation and ability to lead others. She has represented our Berkeley County Schools Child Nutrition Program at national, state and local levels. As the West Virginia School Nutrition Association Secretary, she advocated for both students and employees for six years. Workshops and conferences are just one of the many ways that Mrs. Nadenbusch increased her education throughout her time as, as a child nutrition employee. Whether it is attending classes on nutrients and child nutrition, how to create a positive workplace, or how to use KPIs to manage within budgets. Mrs. Nadenbusch takes it all in and finds ways to make it apply to her program. As the Berkeley County Schools Cooks Association President, Mrs. Nadenbusch has increased membership by encouraging her coworkers to see the value in the educational and career opportunities. As well as personal fulfillment. During her 12 year term as president, Mrs. Nadenbusch has raised $6,000. For an annual post-secondary educational scholarship. This scholarship goes to Berkeley County Schools Child Nutrition Employees' Child each year. As a president, she has also led the way in community service. Under her leadership, VCS Cooks Association has completed many initiatives from building a ramp for a disabled student. To visiting and helping at nursing homes. To raising funds for Eastern Panhandle Hospice. To donating benches for the Children's Garden. Creating a positive work environment is essential to Mrs. Nadenbusch. Her motivation can be seen in her efforts to organize after hour social events such as an annual Christmas party and end of year celebration for all child nutrition employees. Finally, collaboration with others. Every time I talk to Mrs. Nadenbusch, I hear much more about the folks she works with than about her. This is a woman who clearly knows how to quote, play well with others. She takes, takes advantage of every opportunity to collaborate with other programs. Like our pre-K and head start programs. She advocates for equipment and the quote, right personnel for our pre-K and head start students. So that they have the same quality meals as those fed within South Middle School. As a final thought, Sandy Nadenbusch represents everything that is good about Berkeley County Schools Child Nutrition and Wellness. She advocates to feed children at all levels. Encourages employees, volunteers for her community and still believes in being a lifelong learner. Sandy Nadenbusch is a school nutrition hero that you want to have on your team. I am so very happy to present her as the 2020 Berkeley County Schools Service Personnel of the Year.
Tracy, would you read what's on the plaque, please? You have to go to the mic.
Bring the glasses and the mask. The West Virginia Board of Education and the Berkeley County Board of Education recognize 2020 West Virginia Service Personnel Employee of the Year. Berkeley County Schools nominee Sandra Nadenbusch Cafeteria Manager. For her exceptional skills and dedication in the performance of her job, thereby earning her the respect and admiration of administrators, coworkers and parents and me.
Sandy, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you. I've seen you in action and I know how you work and. Your dedication to South Middle School and to those students and the faculty and staff is just remarkable. So. We appreciate you so much. Thank you for everything you do for those kids every day. We appreciate you being there and you are such a remarkable employee and a remarkable person. Thank you so much. Item number three on the agenda is the distinguished service award and. Dr. Potton is going to come forward. He is the principal at Spring Mills Middle School and he's going to present the recipient of that award for this month. Tony?
Good evening, Dr. Murphy, Dr. Queen, members of the board, fellow BCS staff and guests this evening. And thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the efforts of a fellow Spring Mills Middle School Patriot. Today I'm here to acknowledge someone who I believe represents the strong values and the high standards of Berkeley County Schools Distinguished Service Personnel Award. And that is Ms. Lynn Everhart, who has served as our school secretary for the past three years. I want to share a little story about Lynn. My first day as principal last year was when I met her. She wasn't supposed to work that day. In fact, her first day back from summer break wasn't for a couple of more weeks. But she came in when she saw my car in the parking lot. She came in, she introduced herself and she told me everything that I would need to do to make sure that I was ready for the beginning of the school year. And as a first year principal, first day principal, I certainly welcomed the advice. On her way out the door, she told me that she'll be back the next day to look over all 900 schedules to make sure that they were ready for the school year. She told me she wanted to make sure she caught any mistakes and that she would sleep better that night, knowing that it was done and that it was done correctly. This first meeting with Lynn epitomizes who she is. Hardworking, dedicated, caring, thorough and supportive. She has been invaluable to our staff and our administrative team as we have transitioned. To the, our click and brick mode of instruction this year. We've had some challenging days in our office. Over the last several months and she was there to help steady the ship every step of the way. Whatever we needed to get done, she was there to help us take care of business. Whenever I gave her what I thought was a challenging task or a difficult problem to solve. And we had a lot of those this year. She came, always said, okay, and she would come back much more quickly than I ever anticipated. With a problem solved or a solution to the task. On behalf of our Spring Mills Middle School family, thank you Lynn Everhart. For all that you've done to support our students and staff every day. And thank you for your 20 years of dedicated service to Berkeley County Schools. And congratulations on your much deserved award as November's Distinguished Service Personnel of the Month. So the plaque says distinguished service award presented to Lynn Everhart for your outstanding service to Berkeley County Schools. We thank you for your valuable contributions to the success of our students and given by the Berkeley County Board of Education, November 2020.
Hey Lynn, I just want to thank you on behalf of the board. I'm so glad you're there to help. Dr. Potton come along and do what he needs to do. It's, the secretaries, he, he kind of works for you, I think, is the way it works, you know? So we thank you for your, your guidance and your keeping him on his toes and we appreciate everything you do for the kids at Spring Mills Middle School. Thank you Lynn very much. And 20 years of service. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Item number four on the recognitions is the volunteer of the month and Todd Cutler, the principal at Burke Street Elementary School is going to come forward and present the recipient of that award. Todd?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Good evening, everyone. Okay, if I will read my master. Gives me a great pleasure this evening to introduce Mr. Charles F. Chaz France Jr. As the recipient of the November Volunteer of the Month Award. And I found out earlier that Mr. Prince has received this award. This will be his second time. So we. Know that he is a wonderful volunteer for Berkeley County Schools. Mr. Prince is an attorney with Bowles Rice LLP in Martinsburg. And Bowles Rice is also one of our Burke Street Elementary's business partners. I asked Mr. Prince if it was okay if I read a little bit of his bio. Bowles Rice web, website. He gave me permission. He said, please don't read too much of it. Mr. Prince, he's during his 35 plus year career. He's tried more than 80 jury trials. Argued more than 40 appeals before the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia and the Fourth Circuit, United States Court of Appeals. Mr. Prince has served as president of Defense Trial Counsel of West Virginia, 2014, 15, currently serves on the Association's Employment Law and Business All Committees. Was a member of the Board of Governors from 2005, 2016. Was awarded the Defense Trial Counsel's Exceptional Performance Citation. As a permanent member of the Fourth Circuit Judicial Conference, serves on the Law and Medicine Committee, West Virginia State Bar. Is also a member of the, the Defense Research Institute and its Commercial Litigation Committee, as well as the National Association of College and University Attorneys. So Mr. Prince has quite the resume and many, many wonderful accomplishments, but. You know, after I asked him that, he said. He said that all those accomplishments. He said, the time working with the Burke Street students means more to me than all of those accomplishments. He said, I, I just hope that I can. Touch each child's life in a positive way when I come to Burke Street School. And he, he certainly does that. I know. He's read for the past 10 years from Mrs. Bowers, one of our third grade teachers. And I know that Mrs. Bowers and her students look forward to him coming in every week. He, he does such a great job reading to them. That they. Their attention is always focused on him and he, they're always excited to hear what he has to say. So Mr. Prince has been, he started at Burke Street Elementary some 30 odd years ago, somewhere around there. Well before the Read Aloud program was even started. So he's been with us long before my time. So I told him I hope that he is still there after my time and I'm sure they would be very appreciative of that. We all know how valuable and important and great volunteers are to Berkeley County, to schools in Berkeley County. And Mr. Prince is for sure a great giving and caring volunteer for our school. Mrs. Bowers, did I ask her to write a little statement about Mr. Prince? She says that Mr. Prince is the coordinator of the Read Aloud Program at Burke Street Elementary. He makes sure that every class has a reader at Burke Street. By asking his colleagues at Bowles Rice to read. He has put in many hours reading to my, my third grade class over the past 10 years. And Mrs. Evering's third grade class well before that. And as he and I discussed many, many classes before, before Mrs. Bowers, even before I was there. I believe he said that he was actually there with Mrs. Mary Brown. She was principal there. She was actually my second grade teacher at the back of elementary. Yeah. Mr. Prince not only comes in to read, but takes joy in discussing the stories at hand. Whether that be through personal experiences, the rich vocabulary, story structure, or just listening to how the students interpret what they hear. He brings a wealth of knowledge and an easygoing spirit that pulls young readers in, any of which are inspired to pick up their own books and just read. Mr. Prince has also helped to hand deliver dictionaries for the Martinsburg Rotary to third grade students in the county. Mr. Prince has also helped to hand-deliver dictionaries for the Martinsburg Rotary to third-grade students in the county. And his initiative, to have students just pick up a book and read is endless and has made a huge difference at our school. With all of that being said, please help me in thanking Mr. Prince for volunteering his time to read and helping to inspire our students to always have a book in their hand. Thanks, thank you very much for all you do for our students.
Todd, would you read what's on that plaque, please?
You make a difference as an outstanding volunteer for Berkeley County Schools. Charles Chaz Prince, November 2000.
Chaz, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. We all know that you're very busy and and the biggest thing is making a difference in the kids' lives. It's so important that people like you come in and serve as an example of kids and they may look and see what they might be someday, but it's very much appreciated and that's why we're all here to make a difference in kids' lives and you certainly are doing that every day that you're there at Burke Street Elementary School. I know the teachers appreciate it, the staff, and I know that Todd really appreciates you being there too. So thank you so much for being a friend of Burke Street Elementary School, but also for Berkeley County Schools. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks, Trace. Okay, item number six on the agenda is the Citizens Forum, and I'm going to read the rules for Citizens Forum before we start. Citizens Forum is a time for the public desiring to address the board on any topic at a regular meeting. To keep the time for the Citizens Forum to a reasonable level, the board president will determine a lot of time amount time for each speaker in order to allow the board to conduct its regularly scheduled business. The board shall not consider, discuss, or take action on items addressing addressed during Citizens Forums that do not appear on tonight's meeting agenda. Due to the current guidelines and best practices recommended by federal and state health officials, we will be conducting Citizens Forum in-person and virtually. The board has accepted emailed comments and those comments have been shared with the board members and will not be read aloud nor shared publicly unless the citizen joins the meeting to read his or her statement online. As the board president, I have determined that speakers will have the opportunity to share comments for five minutes. Derogatory comments, profanity, inappropriate comments, or referencing an employer or student by name will result in a muted microphone removal from the active Zoom meeting. Citizens who have requested to speak via Zoom have been given access to join the meeting. Speakers have joined the meeting via a waiting room and will remain there until announced. When announced, the speaker will be given audio access to the meeting once a speaker has completed addressing the board or the speaker's time has expired. The speaker will be removed from the Zoom meeting and they continue viewing the meeting through website streaming. So we have one email that has been given to the board members and we have one other person that signed up to speak, and that's Jenna Wolfter, and she is here online. So Jenna, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Murphy and senior staff. I am Jenna Wolfter, a chemistry teacher at Spring Mills High School. But once again, I come to you as President of Berkeley County Education Association. My remarks this evening will be direct and to the point. As I have said before, BCEA and the administration have met many times to discuss the issue and concern with click, hybrid, and brick learning. These issues and concerns stem not only from myself or other BCEA leadership, but from our members and educators across the county. We have raised these concerns with Dr. Murphy and senior administration. We were asked to present and revise and we were asked and presented a revised schedule that allowed teachers to give all students the adequate prep time they deserve as Berkeley County students, and we presented that to the Business Partner Education, the Business Education Partnership, excuse me, BCS 101 and the senior administration. In all, Dr. Murphy and his administration has revised BCEA's version of the new calendar and included one day per month instead of one day per week for focusing on student lessons. While this does not fully address the strain that teachers are facing in lesson planning and delivering of content on a daily and weekly basis, it is a step in the right direction, and we thank Dr. Murphy and the senior staff for taking the time and effort to listen. It is BCEA's understanding that you have reviewed this change and are planning to vote to enact the new calendar tonight. As an organization, we urge you to approve this change and encourage you to continue to consider revisions. This year certainly has proven unique in many ways, but one thing has remained unwavering. It is the intent of our educators to deliver quality education to every one of our students regardless of need, location, or instructional model. Please continue to support our educators in this endeavor. To the educators, I would like to say Happy Education Week and thank you for all that you do. Thank you for your time.
That concludes Citizens Forum. Now we have the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the regular meeting on November 2nd, 2020. We have 12 curricular and extracurricular trip requests. We have one use of school property request. We have five budget transfer requests, a budget supplement request, and 11 budget transfer requests. We need to approve the payment of bills, approve the invoices, the financial reports, and the treasurer's report all for the month ending October 31st, 2020. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, the motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Mr. Martin to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number eight on the agenda is the monitoring items, and the first one is the Berkeley County Schools Youth and Family Support Report, and Dr. Yannick Walker is going to do that presentation. So Dr. Walker, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This evening, we are going to share with you some recent information regarding youth and family support services. What we will do and talk about are the four programs that are a part of youth and family support, which are Project Aware, the Martinsburg Initiative, Communities and Schools, and the PASS Program. These initiatives serve the school system through pre-K through 12th grade. And the primary location of the programs are at the Raimer Center here in Martinsburg. As you can see from the data that's listed on your screen, these four programs have served quite a few of our students across the years, specifically even this school year. Most of the programs are available to all schools with the exception of the Martinsburg Initiative, which is which is available to 11 schools primarily in the city of Martinsburg. We are going to start with Project Aware, and that will be Pat Patton, who is going to discuss the recent updates with Project Aware and with Communities and School.
Hello, I'm Pat Patton, coordinator of Project Aware, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I gave you a brief overview of Project Aware at the last meeting, and tonight I'll give you a more thorough description of our services. Project Aware provides evidence-based mental health support to students. We also identify and purchase evidence-based curriculum to be taught in Berkeley County Schools. One goal of Project Aware is to increase access to therapy and behavioral health services. Just to date, we have provided 2,093 students with therapy, and we've had 68 referrals during the first nine weeks of school. Students who were referred receive no call, I'm sorry, receive these services at no cost to the family. And this service is available at all schools and is available to students who are brick and click. Students are referred by school counselors and social workers who identify students who need the additional support of mental health therapy. Project Aware ideally brings therapists into the schools. Since March, the therapists have been seeing students online, or if the student doesn't have access to the internet, in their offices at East Ridge. We are also working with the schools and East Ridge to help therapists return when possible to the school buildings. And as of this week, therapists have returned to five Berkeley County Schools. Another way Project Aware is increasing behavioral health services in the schools is by giving students access to providers who specialize in evidence-based methods to manage stress. We have partnered with providers to present yoga and mindfulness training, as well as mental health and support groups. As you heard from Angel earlier in the night, there are challenges right now conducting groups while trying to achieve social distancing and during the condensed school day. So to address this challenge, we've been working with our providers and the school's technical department to offer these services virtually. We're planning to have these providers record yoga classes and presentations on using coping skills, mindfulness practices, and stress management, as well as other topics, and have them placed on the Project Aware webpage. This will make the presentations accessible on demand to teachers in the classrooms, students at home, their families, and anyone in the community. Another goal of Project Aware is providing staff development opportunities. Project Aware has purchased evidence-based curriculum and is planning trainings so that the curriculum can be used in all Berkeley County Schools. Project Aware has purchased Too Good For Drugs, which is an evidence-based curriculum designed to help students learn the benefits of not using drugs and helps them practice real-world techniques to make better decisions and avoid drug use. We've also participated in purchasing the Second Step Curriculum for all primary and intermediate schools in Berkeley County. This curriculum is designed to help students increase resilience, excuse me, resiliency by helping them learn to sort and manage through strong emotions and learn how to use coping strategies. We're also purchasing staff training. We are purchasing training on how to help students with anxiety, as well as how to manage student-school refusal behaviors. These trainings will be made available online to all teachers, administrators, counselors, and social workers. Project Aware also collaborates with community agencies, invites them to attend a monthly social worker meeting so that information on the resources they provide can be brought to the individual schools. So far, we've had presentations this year from the United Way and 211 on resources for homeless students, the Boys and Girls Club of the Eastern Panhandle on the services they can offer students as well as their families, as well as the Day Resource Center on funding and resources they have made available for students and families with substance use disorders, and I'll speak about this in greater detail when I discuss the Hype Program. Additionally, we are available to school staff for consultation regarding situations and questions involving mental health. And we have received calls and emails this year from principals, counselors, and social workers, and are happy to provide guidance and support when needed. I mentioned the Hype Program, and would like to take a minute to describe what this program offers. Hype stands for Healthy Youth Through Prevention Education and is funded by a grant provided through the Berkeley County Day Resource Center. The program provides funding for students and their families who've been affected by substance use disorders. Through Hype, we are able to provide therapy not just to our students, but their families as well. And this is available in all Berkeley County Schools. Another Project Aware program is the Handle With Care Program. Through this program, when police encounter a Berkeley County student in the community and the student has been exposed to a traumatic event, the police notify the school and the school is ready the next day to provide support to that student so that they can better or are better able to focus on learning. In Berkeley County, the law enforcement participation in Handle With Care has been led by Chief Swartward of the Martinsburg Police Department. Martinsburg Police Department has been a great partner in identifying students and sending us Handle With Care notices so that we can be there to support these students. I'm hopeful that Handle With Care in Berkeley County will be expanding. I have a meeting scheduled with Sheriff-elect Harmon, and I'm optimistic that by early 2021, Handle With Care will be expanding to all Berkeley County Schools. I've already mentioned their Project Aware webpage. On that site, we also keep an updated list of mental health resources in the community for easy access by school staff and the community. In addition, we also work and collaborate with school counselors, therapists, and social workers to identify and purchase supplies to help them work with more effectively with students. We also work closely with community agencies for funding and to keep current on resources that are available in the community that would benefit our students and families. The last Project Aware program that I will discuss is Communities and Schools, or CIS. CIS is a dropout prevention program and is funded through a state grant that provides social workers to the seven schools you can see here. Their caseloads are based on school size and can be as high as 70 students. CIS in Berkeley County Schools was started three years ago in Eagle and Orchard View Intermediate, which were chosen as they had a high rate of risk factors associated with school dropout. These were school attendance, behavior problems, and our academic performance. The problem was expanded to the feeder schools and high schools so that students can be followed through graduation. The CIS site coordinators collaborate with school staff and administration to identify and assess students who are at the highest risk of dropping out of school. The social workers support the students and their families to reduce these risk factors and help the students stay in school and work towards graduation. They develop relationships, they coach, and provide incentives to students who improve their grades, behaviors, or attendance. Just during the first nine weeks, these CIS site coordinators, excuse me, coordinators have made 250 home visits, actually over 250 home visits. While doing home visits, they've delivered bags of food to families with click students who are maybe not have transportation to come pick up the bags. They're working with community organizations to provide assistance to families and they're working with community agencies to provide resources for, say, Thanksgiving and gifts for the holidays. Many of them have closets with basic items for hygiene, such as shampoo, toothbrushes, toothpaste, bottles of water, cleaning supplies, and they give these to the students as needed. Now, to make sure that these students and the click students have access to these items, they're taking orders and delivering the supplies. These site coordinators go above and beyond to engage with their students and their families. And recently, we've learned that the state grant has been extended so that we will have CIS in Berkeley County Schools at least through this school year, as well as the 2021 and 2022, excuse me, 2022 school year. Thank you for giving me the time to discuss Project Aware.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure this evening to talk to you about the Martinsburg Initiative. We have a team approach tonight. I'm going to start and then I'm going to hand it off to several of my colleagues who are here with me in the Raimer office. The Martinsburg Initiative is a police, school, community, health, and education partnership. And we have four major partners: the Martinsburg City Police Department, Berkeley County Schools, Shepherd University, and the Washington-Baltimore HIDA. In addition to these four major partners, we have multiple other partnerships with community organizations, including the Boys and Girls Club, the Berkeley-Morgan County Health Department, WVU Hospitals East, Berkeley Medical Center, the Homeless Coalition, JUMP, which is Big Brothers Big Sisters, Day Reporting Center, the Recovery Resource Center, the Ministerial Association. The Martinsburg Initiative is funded in large part by NACO, which is the National Association of County and City Health Organizations, and that funding flows through the CDC. We're also funded by KUKLE, which is Community Overdose Combating Overdose Through Community-led Interventions, and Washington-Baltimore HIDA. The mission of the Martinsburg Initiative is so important, and it is to prevent substance use disorders, to build strong families, and to empower the Martinsburg community, and that's what we're going to share with you this evening. The Martinsburg Initiative is in 11 city schools: Burke Street, Rosemont, Opeckin. Burke Street, Rosemont, Opeckin, Tuscorra, Winchester Avenue, Berkeley Heights, Eagle School, Orchard View. And this year, we've expanded to be more of a presence in North Middle, South Middle, and Martinsburg High School. The Martinsburg Initiative has an amazing staff. In addition to the director, we have Noel Canelis, who's our family and community outreach coordinator. We have three social workers that are school-based, and they are in the elementary schools here in Martinsburg. We have a lead mentor, Brian Hairston. Carol Hamilton serves as a coordinator. Joni Greenberg is our community liaison, and she supervises our social workers. And Julie Harris also works as an assistant with the Martinsburg Initiative. This is an amazing staff. They work every day on the mission of the Martinsburg Initiative. So I'd like to tell you just a little bit about those five components. With the police section of our partnership, we follow up with Handle With Care notices to the Martinsburg City Schools. The Martinsburg Police Department is an amazing partner to the Martinsburg Initiative. And officers in a regular school year would be making classroom visits to build relationships with the students. We hold a junior police academy in the summer and we also have done trauma training for the police officers. The community section of the Martinsburg Initiative is incredibly important. We provide trauma training for community partners. We do a lot of work with ACEs awareness, and those are adverse childhood experiences. We run nurturing parenting programs with the Juvenile Drug Court and also with the Day Reporting Center in addition to any other community need for parenting program. And we have bidirectional referrals. And what that means is that we accept referrals from our community partners, and then we also give them referrals so that we are using and maximizing all community resources to help children and families. In the health section of the Martinsburg Initiative, we have very strong partnerships with the Berkeley County Morgan Health Department and with WVU Hospitals East, the Berkeley Medical Center. We staff a linkage to care position in their emergency department, and that position is there to link children and families back to the Martinsburg Initiative who do exhibit substance use disorder and are in need of the work that we can do with them. Education plays a big part of our partnership, and education in this fashion means our partnership with Shepherd University. We provide trauma training for Shepherd University students. The Martinsburg Initiative works closely with the Social Work Department at Shepherd to provide opportunities for internship. Shepherd provides data analytics and research support. Shepherd students are mentors in our program, and Shepherd students also have run after-school programs for the Martinsburg Initiative. So at this time, I'm going to move out of the way and Joni's going to share with you what we do in schools.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here and talking to you about what our social workers do in our schools. We have three social workers who work at our six elementary schools. They each have two, they each have two elementary schools. And they do many things to help children succeed. They are referred students who have one adverse childhood experience and they work with them to assess them and to develop like a program or a wraparound service basically on the needs the child has. So they identify what social, emotional needs they may have, what academic needs they might have, and then they come up with a game plan to address those and work with the children. They also work with families of our students, and they can do the same thing with the families. They make home visits, they talk with families, find out if they are food deprived or homeless or looking for a job. And then they tap into our community resources to help fill those gaps so that our parents can be successful. And in the long run, that helps to prevent our children experiencing more trauma. So they do amazing things. They're great people, and I'm very pleased with them. They work with a lot of our community folks. And then NIAAP, YAP, and United Way. They work with DHHR and do just all kinds of amazing things to help our kids. We also have another full-time social worker, Noel Canelis, and she works with our families that have the most intensive needs. So she goes into their homes, she sets goals with them, she identifies resources that are available to help them, and hopefully just build them up so that they can have a better life as well as their young children can. We have a mentor, a lead mentor, Brian, and Brian's amazing with kids. He is kind of like the adult in their life that cares about them, and we all know how important that is. I know the research says that if you have one caring adult, children can almost overcome anything and, you know, have a better life. So he works with them and he has a caseload from students that are from Martinsburg High School, South and North Middle, and Orchard View and Eagle. If we have elementary students, a past volunteer or a mentor, he works with that school, recruits volunteers to go through the PAST training, and then matches them based on similar interests. And then they also have an adult in their life that can just level on them and help them get through the tough times. So that's kind of what we do in a nutshell. It's pretty amazing, and I will turn it over now to Noel. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Noel. I am the Family and Community Outreach Coordinator. So as Joni said, my main role is to work with families, and through that is we really try to build families and help children by building their resiliency. So resiliency is the ability to bounce back after adversity. So different things that can happen with adversity is not being able to pay bills. You know, COVID has been a serious adversity that we're all facing. Other people may deal with losing housing, domestic violence, things like that. So pretty much any traumatic event that our children and our students are dealing with, our goal is to kind of offset that by building that resiliency. And the way you build resiliency is it's all the positive things. So the one thing that we really work on is by identifying five protective factors in our family. We use a strengthening families framework, which those protective factors include parental resilience, social connections, concrete support in times of need, social emotional competence with children, and knowledge of parenting and child development. So basically, if we get a family who is referred to us, I go through a very in-depth assessment and kind of evaluate where they're at on those five protective factors, and then we build upon those strengths. So if they need to be connected with resources, we identify that. If they need knowledge to what to expect with their children or need assistance in parenting, we also look at that. We also really focus on the parents because it's a top-down tier effect. We can work with the kids, but if we can work with the parents, then that's going to be so much more beneficial for those kids. We also work with social emotional, so that's kind of where, if I'm in the home, I kind of help parents learn how to teach social emotional skills with the kids and also teaching how to respond to those needs in a positive way. And also, research recently has shown that the more positive childhood experiences, which is PCE versus ACEs or ACE, the more chances they have resiliency. So there's different categories for that. So our main goal is to really improve those positive childhood experiences in whichever way that we can. So that is all I have, and I will pass it back to Margaret or to Carol.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. I'm going to talk a little bit about the successes of TMI, and I'm very, very proud of this program and this organization. It's continued to build even though the opportunities have been somewhat curtailed by what has been going on in our, in our nation and in our world. But when we look at the children and the families that we're working with and serving, in this year, we've made referrals to a hundred, for a hundred and sixty-six children to TMI. We're mentoring forty-five children. We have seventy-five children and families that we're working with that are case managed. And our social workers, even through the pandemic of last spring for the shutdown for schools, they managed to deliver fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six meals through five hundred and sixty-eight home visits. So they've done a fabulous job in reaching out and touching the families in our community and helping the students and the children in our community. The middle column has to do with trauma training, and that's one area that TMI really focuses on. What the trauma training program does is trains our educators, our community members, and our police force in trauma knowledge and information. So we've educated two hundred and three teachers at this point. Actually, it's teachers and service personnel. It's Berkeley County Schools, it can be any staff member. We have thirty-six trauma-certified educators, and we have twenty-three more signed up for this year. So we're working through the process with twenty-three more Berkeley County Schools employees. We've done our training with thirty-four of the Martinsburg Police Department officers, twenty-eight Shepherd students, and sixteen community partners. So we're getting our information out even, even today to make sure that our community and the employees of Berkeley County Schools are well-educated in trauma training. One of the main reasons why we want to do this, one of our major goals for this is to follow our goals and make sure that the educators that are working with children in the county have that information, that they can work well with students who are in those situations. In addition, we do some other things that outreach into the community. We have something called caregiver cafes. A caregiver cafe is where our social workers, our first four social workers, have a program where parents can meet together and talk with each other about some of the obstacles and some of the challenges that they may have in parenting, not only in regular situations, but also through the pandemic. So it gives them an opportunity to talk with each other, to get information, and to also get support. So we've had fifteen caregiver cafes so far this year. We produce newsletters, not only for our parents, but also for our stakeholders. We've produced fourteen newsletters up to this point. We have twenty-three after-school programs going, and one of our most unique is with the Boys and Girls Club. It's begun at three of our schools. We've added a fourth one for this week. We will be up to six elementary schools within the next month or two. And what we provide is transportation and funding for students to be taken from their elementary school to the Boys and Girls Club for a brief program after school. We have Too Good For Drugs lessons, and we've had eighty-five police classroom visits, and we're looking for a unique way to get policemen back into the schools through virtual means. And I'll turn this back over to Margaret.
Thank you, Carol, and thank you to the rest of the Martinsburg team. I would like to end with some data. I'd like to share some data with you. The Martinsburg Initiative has been built on the science of ACEs, and you heard Noel speak about those adverse childhood experiences, abuse, neglect, household dysfunction. In West Virginia, adults report one-point-two ACEs during childhood. And this is from the West Virginia Health Statistics Center dated two thousand seventeen. Eleven percent of adults in West Virginia report four or more ACEs during childhood. The most common ACE is household substance abuse. A child with ACEs is two times more likely to smoke, two times more likely to have cancer or heart disease, six times more likely to be depressed, seven times more likely to become an alcoholic, twelve times more likely to have attempted suicide, and forty-six times more likely to be an intravenous drug user. In Berkeley County, I'm going to share some data with you from August. In August, there were sixty-four overdoses in Berkeley County. In that same sixty-day time period, there were seventeen overdose deaths. That is the most ever seen in Berkeley County in a sixty-day time period. And this is why the Martinsburg Initiative is so important. We are working to change the odds and to give families and children a life where they don't choose to use substances, but instead they lead healthy and productive lives. So thank you for your time.
The final program that we'll discuss under Youth and Family Support Services will be the PAST Program, which is a longstanding program within our district. The PAST Program is designed to provide academic and student support in various areas such as academic success, educational planning, and positive self-esteem and behavior. The overall goal of the PAST Program is to help students graduate. We've had success stories of where past volunteers have followed students from the time that they began mentoring them through graduation. And so at this time, what we are doing with the PAST Program, we are opting to do virtual mentoring when possible and to keep the program moving forward and to provide those most important mentoring support services to our students. We thank you for your time today, and we appreciate the attention and support that you've given to the social, emotional, and mental health well-being of our students. We're available to take questions at this time if you have any.
Just a comment. Betty Russell and Kathy Campbell, two civic-minded people, I think, were instrumental in initiating PAST back in eighty-seven. I'm glad to see it's still going on as well as these other programs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Item number two under the monitoring items is the American Education Week Update, and Mr. Michael Nepper is going to present that for us. Mr. Nepper? Before you start, Mr. Nepper, we might also mention that you are the Berkeley County Schools Teacher of the Year and was one of the five finalists for the State Teacher of the Year, and we just want to say congratulations again to you, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very honored just to be selected among many fine educators in Berkeley County and throughout the state. So thank you for your support. Oh, the American Education Week. Doing some research when I was asked to talk about it, the five days of what we do to celebrate and to recognize and support all the people, the fleet of people that make up education, the nurses, the support professionals, the music teachers, the bus drivers, the nutrition workers, the volunteers, the community, the pillars of the community, the coaches, and even the volunteer coaches who help come to impact kids, all make up what we do in American Education Week. But the history of American Education Week, it started one hundred years ago, same time as the Spanish Civil. Actually, at the end of nineteen nineteen. In nineteen twenty-one, these educators brought together what they needed to do to help literacy, to help physical education. They saw the statistics even during their time. What was also reflective one hundred years ago is that these, that during, before the eve of the roaring twenties, is that they saw these problems and worked together with the American Legion, National Education Association, and other community members to identify these problems at the same time of changing provision of the Industrial Revolution, the right to vote, and civil rights issues, something that we look on similar today. And through all that perseverance, even at the height of the pandemic of nineteen nineteen, one hundred years ago, they helped shape the public school education that we have today. And that's one of the things I look back, is sometimes when I look at my computer and I feel defeated because pandemic fatigue has came across my classroom, and I just know I can remind myself that this is just for now, it's not forever. And I have to be creative because those people during that time that saw the importance of literacy and physical education or post-World War I, after dealing with all that, were persevering and saw something that was very important to improve the livelihoods of families and children and to help shape public school education. I don't talk to you here with a script. I talk to you from my heart as a teacher. And I do know through a pandemic fatigue and being a coach myself, and feeling so distanced away from kids, that each of those days I'm going to celebrate all the people, the fleet of people that make up what we do is most important. And I realize that what they can do 100 years ago, we will do again through these times, even though we have more comforts. I look and read some of the stories of the times when the American Legion brought together, and it was a partnership between educators before the standardization of public schools, and the men and women, or the veterans that came together and said, "We need to teach our people how to read." And it's through patience. It was a problem that they had to solve through patience. And through that time, what makes it very important is that these people had to use their ambition because the disconnect from rural areas, from urban areas, where they had to go into maybe their carriages or actually just to go in to connect with the people, but also telling them that this is why it's important to read, but also had to teach them willingness to be able to read and give them the reasons why, to connect themselves culturally, to understand their history, so that way they can find their talents and unlock who they are, or maybe find something new that they may be interested in. And from that time, 100 years ago, that we look on to the same kind of struggles and challenges we have, it is cyclical, and we will persevere over that. Today is the kickoff day. Tomorrow, we support our professionals. And we have an educator day. And then on Friday, we celebrate our substitute teachers. We celebrate the fleet of people that these people 100 years ago worked with the American Legion to say, "We're going to create American Education Week." And they helped shape who we are today, developing a system. A system where they have the system of what we, the beliefs and the core beliefs and why it's very important we have education. So when we do feel defeated or we feel challenged, I always take a walk through the hallways and to actually look at the fleet of people to stay connected and to understand why education's extremely important because I want to make sure that it's just not me within the classroom. It is all of us together from within our state that makes us very beautiful and what we do to deliver and improve livelihoods of kids. And I do that to see and create, to make sure everyone is doing well within, as we go through any kind of pandemic fatigue or the challenges, whether it may be if we're teaching click, brick, or any sort of style or remote. It's only for now and it's not forever. And if they can do it 100 years ago, through the Spanish Flu and all the different challenges, and they were able to shape a beautiful society with what we live today and helped us bridge our communities. So I just wanted to thank everyone and hope that you enjoy American Education Week. There are many different exciting, different exciting focuses on each day. I hope that you didn't mind that I did not read through a script. I wanted to speak to you through my heart. And I think that I hope I gave you a whole different insight and indulged you with American Education Week with some brevity. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Very well done. That brings us to the action items on the agenda. The first one is to request to name the Hedgesville Elementary School Walking Track. And the principal of Hedgesville Elementary School is here, Melissa Hall, to talk us through this. So if you would take the charge right now, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Good evening, Dr. Murphy, senior staff, and board members. My name is Melissa Hall, and I'm the principal of Hedgesville Elementary School. And I'm here this evening to ask you for your support in honoring one of Berkeley County Schools' finest educators. As many, if not all of you are aware, in April of 2020, Hedgesville Elementary School and the Butler family of our community lost a tremendous mother, wife, teacher, and friend, Jenny Butler, to COVID-19. Jenny was a tremendous person. She was humble and gentle and completely unassuming. She would hate all of this attention. But within her gentleness, she was also a fierce advocate and a fiercely dedicated teacher. She was dedicated to her students, but also the health and wellness of the community at large. In fact, she had advocated for over eight years for the paving of the school's walking track around the playground at Hedgesville Elementary School. And thanks to her vision and her passion and the fundraising efforts of our Hedgesville Elementary PTO, the track was paved. Jenny's dream of a safe and a beautiful place for students and community members to exercise good health had been realized. The track was completed on April 3rd, and we lost Jenny on April 14th. It was clear at that time that the school would request that the track be named in honor of Jenny Butler. And the time of that request has come. So we are requesting your approval of a plaque to be placed in honor of Mrs. Butler. In the future, we plan to hold a proper commemoration event, but only when it's safe to do so. And understanding the great challenge before us and navigating these unprecedented times, there's also a tremendous responsibility to honor and highlight the truly important parts of what makes us a community. And this commemoration would do just that. So I thank you for your consideration of this request and all you do for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there a motion from the board to approve naming the walking track at Hedgesville Elementary School in honor of those lost to COVID-19 and Hedgesville Elementary educator Jenny Butler? A plaque to be placed at the walking track in the very near future in honor of Jenny Butler, who served us so well as a teacher, as a mom, as a wife. It's just amazing that I knew her well and am so glad that I didn't know the family. Such a wonderful family as well, too. So is there a motion from the board to approve this request?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Mr. Martin to approve the naming of the track at Hedgesville Elementary School in honor of those lost to COVID-19 and Hedgesville Elementary educator Jenny Butler. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Gilf, second.
Dr. Gilf. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Ashton, I think you're out there, the daughter of Jenny. We are so proud to do this in honor of your mom and for the Butler family. It really is a humbling experience for all of us to do this. And we appreciate you sharing Jenny with us for so many years as a wonderful educator. So thank you. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you all very much.
Item number two under the action items is Orchard View Intermediate Change Orders. Scott Mathis is here to bring us up to date on that.
Yes, sir, Dr. Queen. Good evening, Dr. Queen, Dr. Murphy, and board members. Here this evening to ask for approval for the change order number two for Breckville and Hellman Contractors in the amount of $1,544.34. This was a change order for a slight plant omission on occupancy sensors, as well as some fire marshal requested changes in the electrical room. With this approved change order, we are still based off change order number one, $2,149 under the initial or original contract amount.
I hear a motion from the board to approve this change order of $1,544.34 for the continuance of the Orchard View Intermediate School. As presented, this is going to Breckville and Hellman Construction Company. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Dr. Gilf, Dr. Martin, to approve this change order. Is there any discussion?
Just a question. When is the expected occupation of students there in the wing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, I did not hear you. Could you repeat?
Okay, I'm sorry. When will the students be able to move in there, date of occupation?
Really, at this point legally for the fire marshal, at now, we could. I believe Dr. Smith has a plan to push a few teachers over there for maybe the click program. We've got a few minor punch list items, but for the most part, we're ready to occupy. If you want the exact date, we could work and get you that information.
No, I would say that, thank you.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is the Berkeley County Schools File IV, which is the Virtual Instruction Policy. Holly Branch is here to present that. Holly, you're there.
Good evening. Hi, hi, Dr. Queen, Dr. Murphy, and Board of Education members. I'm Holly Branch, and I'm Assistant Director of People's Services. And I'm asking this evening that the Board of Education consider for approval Policy IV, which is the virtual instruction program. It was developed and edited by Bowles and Rice and put out for comment. And I will be working with my colleagues and my supervisor, Ron Stevens, over the next few months to consider procedures for a handbook.
I hear a motion for the board to approve the Berkeley County Schools Virtual School Policy. It's styled as BCS File IV. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm moving from BCS File IV, Virtual Instruction Policy, as presented.
Second.
A motion of Mr. Beckwith, a second by Dr. Gilf, to approve BCS File IV, which is Virtual Instruction Policy, as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number four on the agenda was removed from the agenda. Item number five is the teacher planning workday proposal, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Queen, board members. Before I get to the proposal, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the process that we used to arrive at this evening's proposal and also give a little bit of background as far as the individuals involved and how this came to pass. I think all of us are very well aware of some of the challenges this year, some of the experiences. I hear from staff members also about just general frustrations at different points of time. This all has to do with what I believe is change and what we have been familiar with and what we now are having to address is all new to us on a daily basis from all walks of life. There's also a sensitivity that in looking at some of these proposals that you have to look at it through a lens of the different stakeholders, students, teachers, families, and how these adjustments with our schedule may affect them. So several weeks ago, we meet regularly with our service and professional staff. And we heard from our professional staff, and actually, they've come to several meetings and reported to you about feedback and comments that they've received about our teachers and having to address both the BRIC and CLIC environments. We tried to accommodate families with how we arrayed our schedule and provided both BRIC and CLIC as options. And I think we were very successful with that. I do want to commend the work of our staff. We worked with members of my team, Mr. Dellinger, Dr. Schooly, Dr. Walker, as well as members from the two professional associations, Jana Wolfter, who commented this evening, as well as Jessica Salvia. And when we started this conversation, one of the pressures that the teachers shared with us was they wanted to improve or have time for planning so that they could offer their best in both the BRIC and the CLIC environments. And this additional time for planning, they felt, because many of the things they were having to do in the classroom were new and different, was going to better prepare them so that they could be reaching all students and ensuring that the instruction was of the highest quality. I recognized, and we had the opportunity to bring several of these proposals forward. We had the BCS Business Education Partners. We also had a group of parents that we meet regularly with in our Berkeley County Schools 101. And so we use those individuals as sounding boards for some of these proposals. We also worked very closely with our principals. And I think the conclusion was, we needed to do something, but we needed to do something that was within the realm of the current schedule. Now, Ms. Kizner or Mr. Kenny, I don't know if it's possible to bring up this document that I have here in front of me. So the board members might be able to see that, or individuals at home might be able to see that. But I want to thank all those individuals that were involved. There is no perfect plan. There is no ultimate. I think we have to build consensus. And so it's my thought in bringing this proposal here this evening, I wish we could provide more time for our teachers. But at the sake of hearing some of the issues that they brought forward, I think what we have here is something that's reasonable. I also think we have something that addresses some of the concerns. And I also think we have a proposal that is flexible enough that if we need to come back to you at a later date, basically, some of the things that have transpired, I think that door is a possibility. So while we're bringing that up, there were some existing dates in the calendar that we had as placeholders for our faculty senate days as well as professional development days. And those days include Monday, January 4th, Monday, February 15th, and Friday, April 2nd. And so those faculty senate days will be honored for faculty senates at schools to meet. But we're going to transition the teacher or professional development days, provide the second part of those days as teacher workdays. So we've shifted that adjustment internally. We then looked at additional days that we could identify, and those additional days would be remote asynchronous learning for students. So we identified four dates that laid out very clearly on our calendar. And that first was November 30th, and that's the day after the Thanksgiving holiday, January 27th, March 17th, and then Monday, May 5th. Now, it just so happened during the time that we were putting this proposal together that unfortunately, the school district moved to Orange, which was all remote learning. And so in lieu of if we needed to be remote based on the governor's order or based on the status of the, one of the Department of Education maps, then that day would be just a normal remote day and not asynchronous. So as many of you heard this past week, the governor has elected, and I'm going to talk about that, for our schools to be out of school during November 30th. So even though that day is designated here as a teacher planning day, we will carry on just with remote instruction, and teachers will have both asynchronous and synchronous instruction occur on that date. We'll see how this works. So I'm proposing that we add the 27th, the 17th, and the 5th at this point in time. Again, I think we were able to reach consensus, and I appreciate both Ms. Salvia and Ms. Wolfter working closely with us and bringing ideas and proposals to the table. And I think we have a workable plan here that considers both families And I think we have a workable plan here that considers both families and students as well as staff and provides the additional time that was requested. And I would like your support on moving this forward.
Do I hear a motion from the board to approve the teacher planning workday proposal dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty with these four additional days for asynchronous remote learning days with no synchronous lessons for students? Is there a motion from the board?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Mr. Beckwith to approve this teacher planning workday proposal as presented. Is there any discussion?
Just just a question. Appreciate the work that's coming into this. I was talking earlier with one of the staff. The teachers who are hybrid. We're we're trying to help here, I believe. Could we could we gather a list of their names? Of just the hybrid teachers, not all the but just the hybrid teachers? And then we can follow them and see how see if there's any patterns there. Thanks, but I'd like to know who the hybrid teachers are. I don't even know how many there are. But that was the, that's what generated, I believe, this helpful amendment to our count.
Mr. Murphy, I can take that into account. We need to focus on this.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Item number six on the agenda is the personnel actions, Dr. School.
Good evening, Dr. Queen, members of the board. The personnel actions dated Monday, November the sixteenth are as follows. We have three new coaching appointments. We have one new interim appointment. And we're revising one interim report because the identified coach was not able to fill that contract, so we're going to extend that for the rest of the season there. Five resignations of coaches. Two new healthcare appointments. We have one paid military leave because the duties got extended into the next calendar year. The remainder of that would be unpaid, given that fact that it was extended. We're revising her current calendar year there as well. Then we get one new professional appointment. Nine one seventh appointments. Two professional retirements for the end of the school year. On line thirty, we have a ratification of a suspension and termination, and that is Charles Schroes. We have three resignations of service personnel. Two retirements of service personnel. One revised appointment because that leave of absence has been been extended there due to the military leave. We have one substitute service resignation. Two new substitute teacher appointments. We are removing twenty-seven people from the substitute list as they have not returned contracts nor work this year. And then we have one substitute teacher resignation for a total of sixty-six personnel actions from Monday, November the sixteenth.
Is there a motion from the board to approve the professional service coaching and substitute personal actions as presented tonight? This is all dated Monday, November sixteen, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the professional service substitute and coaching positions as presented.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Dr. Gilpin to approve all the personnel actions as presented tonight. Is there any discussion?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight substitutes. Where are we in substitutes?
We are right around three hundred, three hundred and fifty on the professional side. And then again, we have probably a good hundred of those out working from classrooms already.
One question, Dr. Schooly, the one seventh. Are we anticipating more of those? Did they just come about as a matter when the principals say that they have certain teachers overloaded and they ask them to take take that extra?
I refer that to Mr. Dellinger because it's come out of his department to us.
Mr. Beckwith, at least we have these on at this point in time. We were moving students back from click to break to begin the nine weeks. And as we did that, we wanted to honor as many of those as we possibly could. And that's why these are on there. We've actually added a few teachers and we've added some one sevens to to try to adjust schedules to meet that requirement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number ten on the agenda is the board announcements. Is there any announcements from the board? Hearing none, we're going to go with the superintendent announcements. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Queen and board members. Got a few updates and clarification and information that I'd like to share. So, Mr. Kenny, thank you for bringing up the slides this evening. So I want to share with everyone this evening the status of instruction, and as we are heading into the Thanksgiving holiday, I'll sort of reinforce the message that we continue to stress, and that is that we want to keep our children in school, and it's feeling that all of the board members share. It's something I feel very strongly about. And coupled with that, the importance of not only academics, but for social and emotional reasons. And I do want to also echo here that our staff is doing a phenomenal job. The amount of communication for students who are either brick or click and making sure that they're achieving is something that I think our folks have stepped up to the plate on. So with that as a backdrop, we are also aware of the governor last week making some announcements about how school will be structured over the upcoming holidays. So I'm going to be a little bit specific here as far as, you know, how school will be structured next week as if we continue to be goal or better. We will have school on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is a holiday for everyone with the exception of two hundred and sixty-one day employees. We will then on Thursday celebrate Thanksgiving as well. Friday is a holiday with the exception of everyone but two hundred and sixty-one day employees. And then the governor has asked all schools in West Virginia to move to remote learning on Monday, the thirtieth, Tuesday, December one, and Wednesday, December the second, with us all returning if we are goal or better to brick and click instruction then on Thursday. So I know there were some initial information that came out about this. I wanted to be able to clarify that this evening and share that with our families and our community. So we will then be back to school on Thursday, December the third. I think one of the unique things that has also happened is that parents and families have you know, a way to look in on what instruction is looking like. And I've heard from another, a number of parents and families that they had no idea what actually was occurring in the classroom, and they're quite surprised, but they also are commending our staff. Coupled with that, I think a lot of our instructional staff, our teachers, our aides are getting a little bit of a window as far as what is happening within families. And so it's good to look into both of those worlds. Coupled with that, as I made mention, our teachers are really reaching out so that students are achieving and they will be successful for this first grading period. So we've got parent teacher conferences starting tomorrow for these different levels. Our primary is on Tuesday, Wednesday, we have intermediate, and then Thursday, we have middle. And I know there's the possibility that these conferences, because of the intensity of them, they actually stretch a little bit longer, and I just want to thank our teachers and our families for that commitment. It's important for us to get off to a good start, especially here with the end of the first nine weeks. We heard wonderful words from our teacher of the year, Mr. Michael Klepp, Michael Nepper, excuse me, and Michael shared with you kind of an overview of the various American education weekdays. We kicked off today, and Michael was on one of our local radio stations and shared a number of thoughts that they had with about American education a week. Tuesday is parent day, and we want to get our parents involved, so we pushed out a number of different activities and things that they may want to do with their children around the theme this week. Wednesday, we recognize our educational support staff, and as I like to say, we all have a hand in the success of children from our custodians to our secretaries, to our child nutrition services, health services, parent professionals, school resource officers, technical services, transportation, and also our maintenance staff. Thursday, we have educator for the day, and we're going to bring Zoom into the classroom so we can see exactly what some of those responsibilities are and things that educators are doing. And then finally on Friday, we're recognizing our substitute teachers and the contributions that they make as well to our school division. We are going to be celebrating then during the month of November, and hopefully we will have Dr. Walker return with the student for the National American Indian Heritage Day. We have over thirty students in our school district that are American Indians, and we want to honor and respect them and hear a little bit about what public education means to them, but also celebrating their culture. We've been forecasting a little bit here about winter weather, and the eighteenth through the twenty-second is winter weather awareness. So a couple of hints that we wanted to pass along is to create a emergency kit with at least three days of provisions in the event that we would lose power or you wouldn't be able to get to the store temporarily. But you may want to, you know, work through that as a family. Now's also the time to get your vehicle serviced and winterized. And usually with that first cold snap brings a lot of batteries that are not fully functioning. So you may want to take the opportunity this week as the weather turns a little bit colder to prepare to do that. And then the last thing is schedules typically get changed for families, whether it has to do with schools or not. So you may want to have backup plans or plans in place for alternatives in the event that schedules do need to be adjusted. You can also go to readywv.gov, and they've got a number of helpful hints there. And as always, we'll be pushing a variety of messages should there be delays or closings. I want to recognize also our athletic teams this past week. We had three of our schools participate in postseason playoffs for football, and all of those schools did advance. Spring Mills, Martinsburg, and Musselman. So we congratulate those coaches and teams. And then we finally want to congratulate the Musselman High School volleyball championship. They are the state champions, the Lady Appleman, and they achieved that this weekend. So congratulations to them and their principal and their coaches for that achievement this year. Finally, I wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's a good time to rest and relax with families and friends. Obviously, we want to be safe over the holidays. We've gotten a lot of advisements about that, but I want to, on behalf of the school district, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Dr. Gilpin to adjourn. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.